I'll call the meeting to order of Thursday, August 9th, the Capitola City Council. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Harlan.
Here.
Councilmember Bertrand.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Batorth.
Here.
Mayor Termine.
Here. All rise, please, and join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. City Attorney, may I have a report on closed session?
Thank you, Mayor Termine. The item, the council had a number of items scheduled for closed session this evening, including a matter that was added on as a late item pursuant to the Brown Act before we adjourned into closed session. That was the tort claim of Madison Wells. That claim was added on the advice of council, who advised that the claim came in after the agenda was posted, and could not wait for direction until the next council meeting, which won't be a month from now, until a month from now. Due to time constraints, the city did not discuss the City of Capitola versus Friede Pellerin litigation concerning Greenway. That was not discussed in closed session. Similarly, due to time constraints, the Oscar Ramirez tort claim or case was not discussed in closed session. The council discussed the Wells tort claim in closed session and gave directions to its attorney, Vincent Hurley, with regard to negotiations in that matter, which will take place in the near future. And finally, the council heard from myself with regard to the receivership case involving Mr. Thomas D'Angelo, and I received directions from the council with regard to that matter. But there is no other disclosable information out of closed session.
Thank you. And I want to state that tonight's meeting is being live cablecast on Charter Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99. Our technician is Lynn Dutton. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Only the item that was added to closed.
Right.
This is now a time for public comments. It's time for the public can address the council on items not on tonight's agenda. So if you have any items to say to the council, please come forward. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, councilmembers. My name is Mark Crane. I live on Bay Avenue. The roundabout on Bay Avenue has been on my radar and the city's radar for, since about the early 90s that I'm aware of. And I just wanted to state that I was absolutely in favor of it, and that would encourage you to make it come forward as fast as you can. I think that it's, it will really be a gift to the neighborhoods around there. Every day, I witness traffic moving across my front driveway from either the church, from the schools, from any of the events that you so graciously sponsor and hold in the city. And I just wanted to say I'm a proponent of the roundabout. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the council? Then we will go on to city council, city treasurer. Oh, I'm awfully sorry, sir. Step up.
This is for public comments?
On items not on the agenda.
Okay.
Good enough. Mr. City Treasurer, do you have any thing to tell us tonight?
Yes, quickly, thank you, Mayor Termine. I know there's been a lot of controversy lately over the, well, not lately, but over the jewel box traffic calming issue. But looking at the invoices, the last community workshop that we held cost us $11,000 in consultant fees. So that's a number that you should be aware of. I hope we got our money's worth. That's all.
Thank you. City staff, anything to tell us?
Staff has no comments.
No comment?
Ed.
No comments.
Kristin?
Yes. I just have quickly two upcoming community events that I wanted to share with everyone who is interested. One of them is our Capitola Foundation for Community Service and Public Safety. We'll be having our charity golf tournament on October 5th. So that's something to look forward to. You can find out more about that at capitolafoundation.org. And the other one is the Community Action Board is going to be having an event on October 4th to roll out our community action plan and discuss our plans for, our plans for, and our previous efforts in community engagement. And that can be found at cabinc.org.
Stephanie?
Museum has a wonderful exhibit. We are open Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, from noon to 4:00. If you haven't been in lately, come on in. We also have some wonderful old videos that people have given to us. And so if you want to sit down and watch an interview with Audrey at the Capitola Theater, or interviews with other interesting people, and lots of old begonia festivals when they were very plain and simple, come on in and have a good time at the museum.
Jacques?
So in recent talking with constituents, something came up, Jamie, you might be interested, Steve's not here, I think. A walkway going from the new parking lot up to Bay Avenue. So it was expressed that that is a route they like taking, but they feel rather insecure walking in a potential traffic pattern. So they'd like to see a little walkway to make it safer.
Anything else, Jacques?
No.
Nothing else? The event happening on September 29th and 30th is gearing up. That's the new Capitola Beach Festival, the replacement of the irreplaceable begonia festival, so keep your eyes open for that. In case anyone didn't notice, last week, the circus came to town, and a good time was had by all. We'll move on to boards, commissions, and committees.
Yes. On Tuesday, the Historical Museum Board interviewed two qualified applicants for an opening on its board. They have recommended Dr. Brian Legakis, who is a retired art history teacher from Cabrillo, for the position. Is the applicant here? I heard that he might be here this evening. If you would. Okay. And.
Oh, wait, we haven't appointed him yet. Hold on a second. I'm going to call for applause in a minute. Hold on.
And so he is the recommendation of the museum board for a three-year appointment.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the council?
I'll move the approval of the recommendation.
And there's a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. It's unanimous. Now you can applaud.
Any comments?
Do you want to come up and tell us something, or just wave, or you're good?
I think you have a lot of really great items on the agenda tonight. I'll let you go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to consent calendar. These are items taken with a single vote unless someone from the public, or the council, or the staff would like to pull any item. Would anyone from the public like to pull any item on our consent agenda? Seeing none, council?
Motion to approve consent calendar.
Wait, I have one. Yes, Jacques?
Second?
Yeah. We have a motion in a second, but I think we have an item that Jacques wants to take off. So I read about the grand jury report in terms of mental health crisis, and particularly our intersection with our police department. So I'd like to receive the report. I have no problem with that. Respect the, you know, the grand jury, definitely, and their work for the community. But I'd like to recommend to staff here, excuse me, city council, that we bring back the chief to talk about how our police department here in Capitola responds to cases like this, where you obviously have a person who has a mental health issue, and there's a confrontation or some other kind of action that calls for a police officer of Capitola, or any other division actually, to respond to that. And I've talked to the police chief about this. We do have trained officers to deal with these situations, but also feel it's very good to have a presentation so that the public gets an idea of how Capitola Police responds in these circumstances.
And we will bring that forward at a later date. And on the same note, I received a letter from a citizen that two of our officers on Wednesday night helped a disabled Capitola resident when his electric, little electric rascal chair just petered out on him and just wouldn't work anymore. So they commenced to lift him up in the chair and bring him into his home. Thank you very much. So we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Consent calendar is approved. We'll move on to general government and public hearings. And the first item is the citizens initiative regarding placing an initiative on the ballot. And because of the size of the audience and the amount of potential speakers, we ask you to choose whether you would like to speak for one minute, two minutes, or three minutes. For one minute, you take a green card, and you get to come up first. For two minutes, you take a yellow card, you get to be the next wave. And if you take a red card, a full three minutes will be afforded to you, but you have to wait till everyone else has spoken. So hopefully, after this staff report, you can line up. And when you fill that card out, there's no reason to fill it out at the podium, because dropping it in the box gives us all the information we need. Staff, can we have a report on item 9A?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think the city attorney is going to be leading this presentation for us this evening, and I'll be helping as appropriate.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item you have to consider this evening is more or less ministerial. You have no other options under the Elections Code, which is, at this point, you have to decide whether to submit the initiative to the voters on the November ballot in exactly the form that has been submitted to us. Or secondly, you have the prerogative to adopt the initiative exactly as it was presented to us and make it part of the San Antonio, the Capitola Municipal Code. So that will be your first task. At the last council meeting, you instructed our office in conjunction with the city manager's office, the Planning Department, Public Works Department, and the Finance Department to prepare an impact report, and you instructed us on the topics to be addressed in that impact report. The impact report is authorized by Elections Code Section 9212. That report is part of your council agenda packet, and it's been available to the public since last Friday for their review and consideration, as it has been to the council. The Elections Code 9212 report pursuant to the council direction was to address certain items, and those are listed on page one of the report. The proposed ordinance is consistency with the general plan, the local coastal program, and the bicycle transportation plan adopted by the Capitola City Council and certified by the California Coastal Commission. The proposed ordinance is consistency with the Monterey Bay Sanctuary Scenic Trail Master Plan adopted by the Regional Transportation Commission and the Capitola City Council and certified by the California Coastal Commission. The legality of the initiative, the initiative's impact on transportation, infrastructure, the initiative's impact on traffic congestion, the initiative's fiscal impacts, including impacts relative to the availability of grant funds for Monterey Bay Sanctuary Scenic Trail improvements within the city. So we conducted that analysis in some detail, and the results of that analysis are set forth fully in the, in the report. After reviewing the report, you will see that we have concluded that the ordinance in a number of different respects cannot be reconciled with the Capitola general plan, and the bicycle transportation plan, and also the Monterey Bay Scenic Trail Master Plan. And we have outlined all of the policies in those plans that are either impeded, or contradicted, or frustrated by the mandates that are set forth in the initiative. So we came to the conclusion that on this basis, there are a lot of inconsistencies, and in order to, to legally implement the ordinance, the plans would be, have to be amended. In other words, our first, in our legal analysis, one of the premises is that if a land use ordinance is proposed by initiative, and it has the effect of amending the Capitola general plan, that has to be expressly stated in the initiative, that the intent of this ordinance is to enact this particular land use ordinance, and simultaneously amend the general plan to make the land use ordinance consistent with the general plan. The court, the California Supreme Court has held that if a land use ordinance is proposed by initiative, that effectively, that would effectively amend the general plan, and the general plan amendment is not apparent to the electorate, the initiative fails. And we identified a number of instances where that is. And the initiative itself tells the electorate it's not intended to amend the general plan. So we found a fundamental legal flaw there. The second legal flaw we found in the ordinance was that it instructed city staff on how to implement a plan that was adopted by the city council. In other words, the general plan and the scenic trail master plan were both adopted by the city council. Those are legislatively adopted policy documents. Once the council promulgates policy legislatively, staff is tasked with implementing those policies. And the implementation of those policies is done by staff through the city manager. The city manager is responsible for the administrative service of the city. So once a plan is adopted legislatively, the implementation of that plan, in other words, bringing back a CIP with the projects called for by the plan, bringing back a budget that allocates appropriations for projects called for the plan, that is all done by the city manager. And he brings it back, and the council will approve those appropriations and the CIP. But the actual carrying out of the projects is done administratively. There's another body of law enunciated by the California Supreme Court that says initiatives have to be legislative in nature. If they dictate administrative action, they impair the operation of the city. And not being legislative and being administrative, the initiative is invalid. So we found a flaw there. The ordinance, on a third basis, tells the city, subsection A in the operative section of which contains the ordinance's mandates, tells the city, it tells you and city manager how it can and cannot spend city money and city resources. Again, the California Supreme Court has said that an initiative that impairs the fiscal prerogatives of the city council, you are duly elected as the trustees of the city's funds. You have a fiduciary obligation to spend the city's funds in a manner that you deem in the public interest. And an initiative cannot deprive you of that authority or interfere with that authority. We came to the conclusion that this does very clearly by saying how you can and cannot spend city resources that are entrusted to you to be spent. And then finally, we came to the conclusion that the ordinance is vague. It's very hard for city staff to understand exactly what, and what, for example, is related to, or they use terms like related to, and we've identified those in here. And detour is a very important term used in the initiative, but the term detour is not defined. So we came to the conclusion that, again, under principles enunciated by the California Supreme Court, because staff cannot, staff understands that the ordinance intends to abridge its authority, but it does not explain to what extent and who makes those decisions and things of that nature. So it places staff in an untenable position. And if you read the last section of the report, there are some very tangible illustrations of how that's done. Do we interpret the word detour to constitute the entire portion of the scenic trail that is off the rail corridor? If so, does that, that means that, does that mean the city staff cannot expend money or resources to maintain any of the bike paths that connect the one end of the, where the path leaves the trestle bed, or the rail bed, and to the point where it returns to the rail bed over on Monterey? Or does it mean just the trestle? We don't know. They use the term trestle in one of the mandatory sections of the ordinance. Under subsection B, they use the word trail. It's very, it's very difficult to understand exactly what the mandate was. So we came to the conclusion that there are some significant vagueness problems. And the council gave us direction to have those concerns, those legal concerns brought to the attention of the court, so the court could weigh in on them and see if the court agrees with us. And that lawsuit was filed last week, and a hearing on that lawsuit will be conducted on August 20th. So those were the concerns that we had. And then there were other things that were not legal in nature, such as traffic congestion, transportation, infrastructure impacts, and fiscal impacts, that the rest of, the remainder of the city team weighed in on. And for that, I'll defer to the city manager.
Thank you, John. I think it's important to note that this, the proposed initiative is not a referendum. It is new proposed law. And as such, the proposed ordinance contains two operative pieces of language, which you can see up on the screen right here. The first is that the City of Capitola must summarize, shall take all the steps necessary to preserve and utilize the corridor and trestle for active transportation and recreation. In general, that is a relatively benign statement, were it a, were it simply a referendum. But as law, it all of a sudden takes on a different level of significance and interpretation. For one thing, the City of Capitola doesn't own, manage, or regulate the trestle or the corridor. It's owned by the RTC. The city doesn't permit train travel, doesn't in any way regulate train travel or regulate the tracks. But because this would be law, for example, should the RTC seek to take steps to repair the trestle next week and come to the city for an encroachment permit, for example, would it be incumbent upon the city to deny that encroachment permit to allow reconstruction of the trestle if it wasn't for active transportation? So you can see, because it's not a referendum and because it's law, it creates sort of inherent conflicts and contradictions that become difficult to rectify. The second piece that you'll see there in B creates a little bit more confusion in that it says, "No City of Capitola Department shall expend any funds or resources related to the construction, reconstruction, operation, maintenance, financing, marketing, or signage of a detour of the trail onto Capitola streets and sidewalks." Now, the challenge in that is, when you really dig into the language, is interpreting what is a detour of the trail onto Capitola streets and sidewalks mean? Is the implication that it's simply taking a route from the trail onto the Capitola streets and sidewalks, and you can't build or maintain that detour onto the streets? In which case, the impacts, I think, would be relatively benign from a fiscal infrastructure traffic standpoint. However, as Mr. Barisoni pointed out, if the interpretation is that the detour is, that the city is precluded from building, maintaining, or constructing a route that would allow people to go around the trestle, essentially, it would be a freeze on infrastructure investment and maintenance in the, in this subject corridor that you can see on the screen. Ultimately, over time, staff concluded that were maintenance prohibited, as outlined in the ordinance, under this interpretation, obviously, the condition of that infrastructure would deteriorate over time and potentially subject the city to increased liability. So I know it's a lot to get your heads around, but I think the city attorney summarized it accurately and well in his initial introduction, in that there is very little discretion that we have at this point. The City of Capitola is obligated to put this on the ballot, and simply, there is no discretion associated with that choice. So with that, I'm going to leave it, and let council ask questions.
I have a question for you and/or the city attorney, and that is, have you reviewed, and can you comment on the letter from Mr. Maroni from the Coastal Commission?
Yeah, I just reviewed that this afternoon. I got it about 4:00 this afternoon. And he, in general terms, comes to the conclusion that the ordinance is not necessarily inconsistent with the LCP. If you look at our, our, the 9212 report, let me find the page.
And for the audience that doesn't know, the LCP is our local coastal plan, which the Coastal Commission watches very carefully.
Okay. On page, page 67 of the council's agenda, that's part of the 9212 report, there is a local coastal program policy. Develop a scheme for safe bicycle connection between Cliff Drive and Park Avenue, and improve bicycle parking facilities. Implementation, develop overall bicycle plan for Cliff Drive Village Park Avenue transportation, utilizing directional signing, and seek Regional Transportation Commission funds for development. Well, that is part of the detour under one of the interpretations of this ordinance. So I came to the conclusion that the ordinance prohibits us from expending resources for those purposes. So in my estimation, the ordinance can be interpreted to prohibit us from implementing an LCP policy. Their, the Coastal Commission staff's letter suggested that we still had discretion to budget funds for those purposes, but I don't read the ordinance that way.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would also add one other point that I failed to mention previously is, is that the one point, piece of discretion the council may have is, is if the council wants to designate any members, members to sign or prepare an argument related to this measure. So that would be a second action after placing the item on the ballot.
Not, not mandatory, but.
Not mandatory.
At our pleasure, okay? Any questions of staff? I think Jacques, you hit your finger up.
So with deteriorating facilities in Capitola, which traffic, pedestrian vehicles, bikes and stuff, what position does that put the city in?
Well, to the extent that you have a bicycle accident and a personal injury resulting from that accident, there's a theory of liability, dangerous condition of public property. If you're on notice of a condition of public property for a sufficient amount of time, that's dangerous and is potentially injurious to users of, for example, a bike path that has a pothole in it or something of that nature. And if somebody has an accident, they can sue on a dangerous condition of public property theory of liability. And upon demonstrating that the condition was indeed dangerous, and the city was on actual or constructive notice of it, with sufficient time to cure that problem, we would be held liable for the injury that was sustained.
One more question.
Sanitation District had a bicycle accident, and we had to pay out quite a bit because of it. There were serious injuries.
Another question, Jacques?
Yes, I do have another question. Assuming this passes, what position does that put Capitola in respect to RTC? If they move ahead with plans, and obviously, the trail plans, the relationship between us and what kind of legal issues might arise?
I don't know if there's any legal issues. I think it's primarily, you know, those would be political issues with direct impacts on the RTC's willingness to release funds to the city for various RTC projects in the city, and the city manager is in better position to comment on that than I am.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Bertrand, I think that the key would be that, you know, in our analysis, our best guess is that it would make the city grant applications to the RTC less competitive if we were unable to complete the trail pursuant to the RTC's adopted Trails Master Plan. So for example, if we were only able to do section X, but we couldn't do section Y, presumably, our applications would be less competitive when viewed against other grant applications. I guess one other point that I think the council is all aware of, but I think it may be helpful for everyone to understand, is the decision about what happens on the trestle is going to be a decision of the RTC. And the City of Capitola has one seat on the RTC board. So the RTC could decide, has one seat on the RTC board. We currently have two representatives, as Councilmember Batorth serves as the metro representative on the RTC board. But the RTC could vote 12, or 10 to 2, to keep trains on the trestle, with the Capitola votes being against. That could happen. Capitola would have done everything in its power under this code to comply with the first set of code that's up there. However, we would be stuck with, for the foreseeable future, section B, which prohibits the city from maintaining, or constructing, or signing a detour. And so you can imagine how that plays out over time, potentially 20 years. Essentially, there's this built-in penalty where all the City of Capitola can do is vote. vote on the RTC board and lose and write letters to the editor and not maintain streets and sidewalks that allow for this detour. So it puts the City of Capitola in a very awkward and difficult position, I think, down the road, thinking again, independent of your views about what the use on the trestle should be, just because we don't ultimately control that use.
Any other questions? I have one more. One more for you.
I'm sorry for taking so much of the council's time. Assuming that this was meant to be a plebiscite to get the opinion of voters in Capitola, what they felt about this particular excursion on Capitola streets, you laid out that we only have two options, either adopt or put it on the ballot as it is right now. But you've also told us in very great detail, I enjoy reading your report, how this actually is an illegal, there's many issues with it that makes it so, including potential liability based on the question I just asked. Does this council have any leeway to try to put something on the ballot right now for the next election to actually get the public, give the public a chance to express their views on this without any legal ramification?
If we had more time, the council, it would have been within the council's authority to put an advisory ballot measure on. If the council had received enough interest from constituents that in its opinion, they should weigh in and get a view of the full community, the council would have had the authority to put an advisory ballot measure on just to gauge the level of public opinion, pro and con, this type of proposal. And with that information, the council could have then acted legislatively. Unfortunately, the last day for us to do anything is tomorrow. So there's no time for the council to prepare an advisory ballot measure. And that's not something that can be done by initiative. This initiative, a lot of people have written letters to me over the last week saying that this is their opportunity to express their opinion. But unfortunately, it's much more than that. It's, it's a mandatory ordinance that creates some very difficult legal problems for the City of Capitola, which I've just identified, so.
I'd like to open up the public portion of the hearing now. So everyone with a green card, please line up. I would beg you not to hang back so you could be the last word. Line up because I'm going to move to the yellow cards very quickly. Jacques, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, council members. Thank you, staff, for your well-thought-out report. I would like to associate myself with your report. You had a lot of great information there. I know that this person who's brought this proposal forward wants to be active in the community, wants to get their opinion out there, wants to do something, wants to make an impact. And I applaud that. However, this person has chosen to put themselves in opposition to other citizens. And we have the right to come forward and be offensive to your position. I take great offense to this proposition. This proposition is going to cost our city a lot of money. There's a lot of better places for our money to go than fighting an initiative. As staff has mentioned, there are many plans in place already. And this initiative is just going to cause us problems. So thank you for, for your report. I'm opposed to this initiative and I'm opposed to the person who's brought the initiative forward.
Thank you, Jacques. Can we have the tone activated, Mr. Treasure? That's good work. Next, step right up. Don't be shy. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sarah Taylor and I'm here as a parent. I currently live in SoCal, but I've been in the community since 1975. And I'm also currently on the SoCal Union School Board as a trustee. I would like to support Greenway and a trail for our families. We have a lot of children that live up in Capitola and it'd be nice for them to have a safe pathway to walk to New Brighton Middle School. And I, I would also like to say that as a community member, it'd be nice to have a pathway that's safe for our community, our families, our schoolchildren, and I'm in support of Greenway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Rainey. I live in Capitola. And I grew up in Davis, which even to this day has the greatest percentage of bicycle commuters in the entire United States, from what I understand. Great place to live, great place to get to work. So this may be a little bit of an oblique statement. I'm sorry that this, this bicycle, personal mobility discussion has gotten kind of bowed down in so many different, you know, legs of the octopus. But I'd also like to say that I worry about the bike path going up Stockton Avenue. My partner and I often get our sandwiches and sit up on those benches above, on the cliff above it and eat lunch. And I've seen some road rage, I've seen some near misses and some near hits. And I can't imagine more bikes and pedestrians being on that pathway, whereas I think the trestle would be a wonderful solution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. I'm coming at this as a born and raised Santa Cruzian. My name is Jasmine Sky Marani. I was formerly a congressional intern for Representative Panetta. I'm also a master's in policy student and a prospective election law student. So I'm coming at this questioning the right to a democratic process that all American citizens possess. I think it's incredibly important that if we're going to be offering people voices, we should also be offering them choices. Locally, I can't think of anything more important than the right to transport oneself. I think the fact that we have something that is such a wonderful piece of living history here in Capitola is being very much underestimated. So I, I just urge you to, to think with a patriotic heart tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next. Welcome.
Good evening, council. My name is Manu Koenig. I live in the city of Santa Cruz. I've also lived in, grew up in Cora Lito. So I traverse the city many times across Stockton Avenue in my regular commute. I also help collect a good number of the signatures for this initiative. And I will say that the people of Capitola resoundingly supported this initiative in, in that process. And, you know, of course, it wasn't our intention to create these difficulties for the city. I, I really think that, as Jacques said, or, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bertrand, you should put this on the ballot as a, as a quote-unquote "plebiscite" and opportunity for the people of Capitola to vote on this. And in doing so, don't submit a partial statement that tells the voters whether or not it's, you know, how they should vote. You know, council can always sue after it's voted on and, you know, prevent it from actually taking effect. But it is important to let people vote on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Come, step right up. We're doing green cards right now. Please, you have a green card. Now's the time to speak. Yes, that is a green card you have. The guy in the back. Yes.
My name is Kitty Hanson. I live in Capitola. I bought my house here 20 years ago as formerly a Santa Cruz City firefighter. And I ride my bike in Capitola at least three or four days a week. And I have commuted often. And I would like to say that I ride all over the streets and I've not had an accident and I've not felt unsafe. And I think we ought to look at the broader picture, which is transit from one end of the county to the other. And if everybody did their due diligence and went and listened to the general manager from SMART last Wednesday at the Simpkins Swim Center, he will tell you that not only does, do every businesses along the way benefit from that train stopping in their town, but they have room for 24 bikes in each car of that train. And that train is full of bicycles. So they get on where they want and they go all the way up to Wilder and they ride up in the hills and they come back. It's, that is the bigger picture. And I think, even though I live here in town, I'd love to ride my bike across the trestle. I think it's more important to-
Thank you.
-have the whole county involved. Thank you.
Well said. Anyone else with a green card? Step right up. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Gaher and I live in Aptos. And I worked with Manu on the Greenway signature campaign, getting signatures in support of the bike path. And from my point of view, I think that we should put it on the ballot because, as Manu said, it would be a great way to let people vote on the, on issues they care about. And also, like, it's, like, there's a lot of support for building a bike path instead of a train for a lot of good reasons. One, the track, the tracks are really old, especially the trestle. You can see visible signs of aging. And to build a train would take a lot of money to put, put it there. And like, it would take a lot of time to complete. So I think we're just going for the cheaper option, which is also the best as a bike rider myself.
Thank you. I think we're up to the yellow cards now, yes? I see no one else with a green card, or maybe I do?
Yellow card.
Yellow card, step right up.
Somewhere in here. Again, my name's Mark Crane. I've lived on Bay Avenue since 1993, I think, somewhere in that range. And I'm speaking as a proponent of the ordinance that's been proposed. The primary reasons for this are that it, it, it doesn't, I don't, the city attorney and, and the Public Works City Manager have laid out some worst-case scenarios. And I honestly don't think that they really needs to play that way. It's an advisory. I wish there was time to work with the various parties and make sure there's language in there that could give the city to do the freedom that they wished and yet still constrain the fact that they, that the wishes of the people, and we'll see what the wishes of the people are, but, but it's to, to not spend city funding on detouring the trestle for pedestrian use. I, my boys, all of my family have walked that trestle illegally, probably, for, since I've lived here in '89. And it, it's there, it is. It's, anyway, I'm in favor of the intent of what the ordinance proposal does, which says, "Don't spend city funds on detouring." The, the previous person said they hadn't had any accidents and then the one before that said they've seen near misses. The, the trestle's a really clear, easy way across it. Anyway, you've got a decision in front of you? Go for it. Thank you and thanks for the time.
Thank you. Next. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Yannika Strauss. I'm the executive director of Bike Santa Cruz County. Bike Santa Cruz County is in full support of the adopted plan for the Monterey Bay Sanctuary Scenic Trail, a continuous off-road, multi-use path across the county. Our highest priority is that the Monterey Bay Sanctuary Scenic Trail is routed across the Capitola Creek on the Trestle Bridge rather than permanently detoured through the village. We appreciate that the petition, signature gatherers for bringing this issue to the forefront. But it is entirely possible to have both the train and the trail on the Capitola trestle and we support the Regional Transportation Commission and their efforts to study that possibility. Measure D raised sufficient funds to build the majority of the trail and can be leveraged to apply for and get state funding to, to build the remaining portions. Regardless of the outcome of the unified corridor study and whether or not passenger rail becomes a reality, it will be many years before a trail's funded, designed, and built on the Trestle Bridge. Before the trail is built on the trestle, cyclists will need to be rerouted through the Capitola Village. This is already a popular cycling route and any improvement will be a huge benefit to Capitola residents and cyclists. Please support infrastructure improvements through the village. To prevent this option while planning and design is happening for the trail on the trestle is detrimental to Capitola residents and visitors as well as cyclists across the county. Please do not support the Greenway-Capitola Initiative and instead actively work to educate the public on the negative impacts that it has on the cycling community and the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Barry Scott. I live in Aptos, but I was buried out on the beach about 25 years ago in Capitola. So I love this town. If, if, if you ever, I'm, I'm on the board of Friends of the Rail and Trail and I also manage a group that we've had for a few years called CoastalRail.org because I'm a big advocate of public transit and using the, the bridge for rail transit one day and, and a trail. I think a trail is more likely to happen sooner if we keep the rail part of it. And I think a great argument can be made for light, electric rail transit that many of you may not be able to imagine because nobody's really presented it to you before. I was talking to Chad Edison this morning in Salinas at their groundbreaking for the Salinas to Gilroy extension that Monterey County is implementing. And he said, "Yeah, I think battery electric multiple units are the kind of trains you're going to see on your branch line." You know, the Caltrans has a significant funding for this. And before I run out of time, I want to say one thing. I love Capitola. You have a, a rail corridor running through town. If you're going to gauge public opinion, I hope that you'll include the entire county because it's the entire county that, that will benefit or, or perhaps fail to benefit on what happens to that little strip of, of, of bridge and trestle there. It, it is a county-owned property with a federally recognized active rail line running through the community, the City of Capitola. And as such, it's really kind of everybody's interest what, what goes on with it. So good luck. I'm sorry that you're in this position. It can't be, it can't be easy and I, I, I wish you the best outcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Sam. Always good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. I hope I picked the right color card.
Yes, you did.
I just wanted to get up and express my point of view as a 30-year resident of the City of Capitola. I don't think I could see something that is going to be more defining and impactful for our city than the use of the rail corridor. Now, once again, it's kind of like Capitola is at the center of attention. And I think we've always embraced that position, but here we are, both literally and figuratively. I want to, one, compliment the city manager, the city staff, and the city attorney on completing this report, very thorough report, in such a short period of time. I do, I did want to focus on their conclusions at the end about this all maybe turns on interpretation and the intentions of the drafters of the ordinance. And there's interpretation A, which is a more minimal impact. And I would foster that. I believe that that's what the purpose of this ordinance is. And because it's so impactful for our community, I think it's important and appropriate to put it out to the residents of Capitola for their expression, their, their vote on the issue, and of course, being educated about what this may mean for their lives and the lives of their children. And I did want to cement, I think there's a difference between the Monterey Bay Scenic Trail and the rail corridor and the direction that they may go in. I believe the scenic trail is, is, it exists now. You can see people using it now. It will continue to exist and be used in the future regardless of what may happen on the trestle or the rail corridor. And maybe in conjunction, what, what may happen on the trestle and the rail corridor. If I may, just quickly, I seem to run out of time, but I also believe, I think it's appropriate to go to the court because I don't think that the council, you should have your hands tied on what should be done to provide for the safety of bicyclists and the safety of pedestrians that move on the roads in, in our community. So I think that that's important to do. But one final point, I think that-
We're going to, we're going to flag you for not taking a red card, but go ahead.
If I may, just quickly, I think you should look at the wording on the ballot measure and, and be sure that we don't put in language that may imply that it has the more exhaustive interpretation B that was stated in the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Ed Spur and I want to thank you for your service to our community. I had prepared some remarks in favor of a safe and level pathway through the county because we don't really have that. But after listening to you this evening, I realized that the RTC seemingly has made up their mind that they want a passenger train and that whatever's left over in the right-of-way will be a narrow sidewalk. And I did help circulate the petition to, that you're talking about tonight. What I wonder is that if you need to gauge the community, like I think there was over 1,000 signatures, 800 of them being valid, if you want to gauge the community, then get to, put something on the ballot. You've got like all day tomorrow. Just a couple of words, you know? Are you in favor of this or that, you know? Find out what the community's thinking. There's lots of different opinions, but you don't really have a whole lot of power. The RTC is in charge of this thing, and if we're going to write for the sidewalk and the train to be built, it won't be in my lifetime. So seize the opportunity. You have all day tomorrow. Find out what your constituents and our neighbors are thinking. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hello. This is my first time addressing you, but thank you for your service as well. My name is Andrew Wolfe. I live in Capitola, right up in, near New Brighton, and been a resident of Capitola for the last five years. My daughter is eight months old, and I walk along probably every morning and every evening, including this evening, along the railroad as well as out to the cliffs to check out the surf and the feeding frenzy that was this afternoon. It was super fun to watch. And I just, I've been really inspired by a lot of the people who've talked today, and especially the last two gentlemen, speaking about democracy and our local democracy. And really, I've gauged opinion just in my own neighborhood in New Brighton. I've found very few people that really are incredibly favor of having a railroad, a rail going through very close to their neighborhood and having that offset, and not being able to access the trestle as well as not having a world-class bike and trail that goes through. But besides that, the last two gentlemen really emphasized the fact that I think we really need to understand what this community, more than just ad hoc and, you know, stories here and there, but really understand what this community wants and what the desire for their future, for the future of my little Zoe and for the future of a lot of kids that I know in the neighborhood, as well as the community in general across all age groups. And so I really hope that you take that to heart and really look to understanding what this community wants through a ballot measure and protect and move for safety more than anything. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Renee Roberts. I live in Capitola, up close to Gail's, and thank you for hearing the public opinion on this matter. And I appreciate the legal analysis given earlier this evening in the city council meeting. And I understand the position, the very difficult position that you are put in. I would like to voice my opinion in favor of the Greenway-trestle proposal. Of course, I don't love the idea of limiting funds to the rest of the city use. However, I am, personally, I grew up in a town up in Marysville, Washington, in which the town was truly divided by a train, train tracks, and it was very annoying, and it was difficult to traverse from one side of the town to the other side of the town with the constant train use on the tracks. And I would hate to see Capitola experience that. I have a little daughter who's two. We often go to Jade Street Park, and I'm concerned about the impact about, regarding the train use there. And as the citizen previously said, you do have a day to put together something, and I know that's not a lot of time, but I would like to see something on the ballot that is reasonable, practical, and can make our community more safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just for the record, it's not a matter of just writing something for the ballot. We would have to have two council meetings between tonight and tomorrow to make it happen, so it's not going to happen. Step right up. Yeah.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Quentin Schaefer. I just graduated high school at Santa Cruz High. I live in Santa Cruz. I did a lot of work with Greenway, talking to people, going door-to-door. I just want to say that from what I've seen and read and experienced, this is one of the most divisive issues in Santa Cruz, you know, for a long time. And I've seen so many different outlooks on the whole matter, and especially coming here, I just feel like has a lot of weight in this community. I did a lot of work in Capitola, and one neighbor would immediately grab me by my collar and yell at me to get off their property, and the next one would be hugging me and kissing me and telling me to love Greenway.
Try running for office.
So I just want to say, especially with such a historical landmark, being at the center of this matter, there's going to be a lot of change that would come with all this, and the people just deserve a voice. I think it'd be great to just put on the ballot.
Thanks, Quentin. Red cards. Step right up. Who has a red card?
Good evening, council members. I'm Darrell Johnson. I'm a member of the Seniors Council Board of Directors and also a member of the Aging in Place Work Group that was formed as a result of the Seniors Council Solutions Summit that was held in October of last year. I think some of you are, I know some of you may have attended this. I know at least one did because Councilmember Bertrand is a member of the Seniors Council Board and was one of the guiding forces in helping the senior summit to take place. We appreciate his participation and the work he does on our board. The Solutions Summit was a group of over, about a hundred service providers, advocates, and political-appointed people that were a part of meeting to develop solutions to the problems of seniors within our county. We also acknowledge and appreciate Councilwoman Stephanie Harland's work on the Seniors Council Advisory Committee. But I'm here this evening to provide you with information about some of the challenges that we face in aging in place. While our focus will always be on finding solutions and delivering services, we are aware that we, first of all, needed to determine what the problems were that we were facing. With the sixty-plus population having already increased in our county by forty-nine percent since 2011, during the same time that under sixty people decreased, we know that there are issues and concerns that are critical in the area of seniors' issues and aging in place. So I'm here tonight to present the infograph about aging in place in Santa Cruz County, and we will be back later to help find solutions to these major problems. Contact information is on the back of the page for those who would like to look into real solutions to the challenges that we face. We ask for your continued support for services for older adults, as you have in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So, good evening, Mayor Tremini and Capitola City Council members. I'm Tom Evans. I'm a resident here at Capitola up in the Jewel Box. I'm also the chair of Greenway-Capitola. So, as you know, in less than six weeks, over eight hundred Capitola registered voters signed our petition because they all want a bicycle and pedestrian trail in the rail corridor and across the trestle. And the vast majority of the people that we spoke to, and others have already stood up and talked about this, but the vast majority of the people that we spoke to in Capitola want a trail across the trestle, and the reasons why are clear. A trail across the trestle provides safe routes to school, number one.
Can I get you closer to the microphone, please?
Yes. So, a trail across the trestle will provide safe routes to school. It will also provide easy access across the village for people of all ages and abilities. It will provide skateboard access across the village to both New Brighton Middle School and the skate park. And finally, it will provide a safe and separate pathway for pedestrians and bicycle commuters who want to get across the village. This last point's going to grow in importance as more people embrace active transportation and new offerings like Zoom bikes appear. A trail across the trestle is part of the vision for the spine of the Monterey Bay Sanctuary Scenic Trail Network. It's actually shown in three different pages of that plan. However, unfortunately, it's not actually part of the plan to have the trail go across the trestle, as you all well know. So this measure shall have the city do everything in its power to have a trail along the corridor and the trestle in Capitola to be used for active transportation and recreation, because that's what the majority of the citizens of Capitola want. So I encourage everyone to come out and vote on November sixth, when this is on the ballot, and vote yes for this measure, for a healthier, safer, and better Capitola. And since I have a few seconds left, I just wanted to point out two specific instances. This actually wasn't part of my prepared remarks, but just happened recently. Yesterday evening, I was walking down Cliff Drive to attend the band, as well as many other people were, as well as traffic all lined up along Cliff Drive, and a woman was walking down there pushing her baby stroller, and cyclists are coming by, and they're not going fast or out of control or anything like that, but there's not enough room, and they almost hit her. I mean, twice, just last night. This is why, I don't know if she was crossing through Capitola or if they were crossing through Capitola, but if there was a corridor across the trestle and either of them were, that would have been avoided. And then this evening, walking here, and this picture is very appropriate, eight people on the trestle taking pictures. That's when it's off limits.
Thank you.
Imagine if it was on limits. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Nick Beliach, and I'm from Watsonville. Hello, Stephanie. Haven't seen you since back in the landfill days, which I sat on for thirty months.
That was great.
That's a bad connotation, a very bad connotation. Carry on. What about this?
I don't own a railroad, and I don't own a bicycle manufacturing company nor a hiking shoe company, because those are the three things that are really going to be big here. I'm really coming to you here as an outsider. I haven't been involved in a lot of government issues in this county and other areas over the years, a lot of them, and I've seen a lot of funny business in government bodies. So I'm going to give you an outsider view, because I'm not a Capitola resident. Most of the time, elected officials and government bodies detest citizen initiatives. And at times, those same officials and government bodies like to do funny things with initiatives. And I've advised people over the years some of the things that government bodies or elected officials would like to do against an initiative. They order a report. Sometimes they monkey around with a ballot question. Sometimes they file a lawsuit. And other times what they do is they use public funds before the election and do this for information-only purposes to try to sway the voters. Looks like you already got three of those four. I'm not saying it's nefarious, it's just, for someone that's an outsider that's seen this many times, it's unusual. I'm disturbed in regards to the impact report. I looked Friday on the agenda. There was a agenda report from the city manager listed five attachments. It did not include the impact report, and I couldn't find the impact report on there. Monday, I see there's a different city manager agenda report that says Attachment Six, which is the impact report, and the impact report was there. It's not fair to the public if that impact report was not there Friday. I know it's not illegal. I'm not saying it's illegal. I'm saying it's improper, and that gives the public a lot less time to view that thing, something that should be avoided in the future. And for history, it should be pointed out that it wasn't there. In regards to the ballot question, there's a lot of power in those seventy-five words. I find it very unusual to have words in there in quotation marks in a ballot argument. That's not a role of a ballot, I mean, a ballot question. It's not the role of a ballot question for an individual has to hunt down what those words mean. A ballot question should be short, concise, to the point, and should be enough information there for a person that doesn't want to read much to make a decision. To have to look for quotations on what they mean is very unusual, and I think you should reword that, remove it. You've got time here. I would suggest take a short break, have the city attorney fix some of that wording. And finally, just a quick thing, is you really could save a lot of money. You could adopt the initiative as is and not hold an election, drop the lawsuit, and you can save a lot of money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Gail.
Gail McNulty. I'm with Santa Cruz County Greenway. And just, I know there are a lot of people in the room tonight that maybe are not going to speak, so if you could raise your hand, just if you were here to support the Greenway measure, it might be nice just to know.
I hate to rein you in, but it is my habit to make sure that you know you're talking to me.
I apologize.
That's okay.
Okay. So a couple of things that were not addressed earlier but are part of the resolution tonight. For one thing, it was the last speaker mentioned that there's a seventy-five words for the ballot, and we know that there is a version on there drafted by Mr. Condoti or Mr. Barisone, one of them. It's actually inaccurate, and you received a letter today stating that it directly conflicts with the, not just the intent of the measure, but the actual content of the measure. So I hope that you will address that this evening. Also, the, there is a yes-no piece of that resolution as to whether or not the measure text will be included in the voter pamphlet, which of course is something that will determine how educated people are if this does go to a vote, so we hope you will give careful consideration to that. Mr. Barisone, tonight, presented a very long and detailed legal opinion. I please, I ask you to remember that this is not the word of God. This is an opinion, and a very different opinion will be delivered to your council tomorrow. So please, listen to this opinion and take it for what it is. It may be from a lawyer, but it is an opinion, and there is a lot of gray area, as we all know with the law. Please don't allow yourselves to make a decision tonight that you might regret based on this one opinion. On behalf of Santa Cruz County Greenway, I would like to thank Juan Esquemia, Tom Evans, and Sarah Taylor for having the courage to put forth this citizens initiative in an effort to provide a safe, direct way for people of all ages and abilities to travel from one side of Capitola to the other. We would also like to thank the Capitola City Council for hosting the only public forum on the rail corridor conversation in January. That night, three of the four council members present voiced that they believe Capitola needs and wants a trail in the rail corridor that crosses the trestle. The outpouring of concern, the concerned Capitola voters who eagerly signed that petition to get this measure onto the November two thousand and eighteen ballot in just over a month reinforces this, and now that measure has qualified, and voters will hopefully have the opportunity to have their opinions officially counted. Many cities have transformed their trestles into iconic things, and citizens initiatives, I'm running out of time, so I just want to say, it is an awkward thing coming tonight, and we know that it's difficult to make this decision, especially in a small town like Capitola where everybody respects this council, but citizens initiatives can be very good things. In nineteen seventy-two, a citizens initiative created the Coastal Zone Conservation Act, aimed at protecting California's coastline from the massive development and environmental degradation. And on that note, I would just like to once again thank Juan, Tom, and Sarah, and everybody that came out tonight to protect democracy and ask for safety, the safest choice for your community. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Well, I'm Juan Esquemia. I'm a proponent of this, and believe me, I never thought I was going to get sued and go through this stuff, but I'm very lucky to live in Capitola. I live up on Forty-seventh Avenue, right next to Jade Street Park, and I get the opportunity to see the sunrise, and I go... to see the sunrise, and I go on the benches in the evening and watch the traffic go by, and I kind of drink my soda there thinking, what a beautiful place to have traffic, and to get to look at the side and look over the cliff there and the beautiful water. But I also see the crossway down there, the, and you see a buildup of the traffic and the cars and the strollers and all kinds of things that could be useful if we had the trail going through Capitola. I myself, I go to midnight mass at Christmas, and I enjoy walking across the trestle at totally dark and have my flashlight and go to midnight mass and come back, and I think it's such a lovely way to look at our beautiful city. And again, it's, this was done out of a necessity to have the kids that cross there every morning to go to school, the skateboarders that are not allowed in Capitola anymore, they don't skate across, but that's how they get from one end to the other. So, those kind of things is what it was made, what we intended for it to do. It was intended to get some safety, some vehicle or bicycle lane only, that was the intent of what we were doing, and now we've gotten to this whole thing. So I do appreciate you taking the time to listen to us, I do appreciate the fact that you are, you know, you're torn about what to do and stuff, so thank you again for your hard work, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Welcome, Vic.
Hey, how you doing?
Great.
Good seeing you, Mr. Mayor, and the rest of the council staff. I'm Vic Morani, I'm here mostly tonight because I'm kind of a proud dad. My daughter Jasmine, who spoke earlier, is a master's student, and she was the intern for Congresswoman Panetta, which is true. And she got me kind of interested in all this stuff again. I'd kind of been in semi-retirement for a while. First, I want to acknowledge both the mayor and Stephanie, I know you're, as I say, termed out, but many, many years of service, and I greatly appreciate, I know many other people greatly appreciate your service, so thank you. But I was also a high school teacher, and I taught history and government, all those kind of fun things. And what we learned in First Amendment to the Constitution, at the very end, it says, "Petition your government for regress of grievances." To petition your government for regress of grievances. And I went, wow, that's really powerful stuff. So when Juan and Tom and some of the other folks, Sarah Taylor, who's an elected official in Capitola, approached people, and a lot of young people got involved, not just my daughter, but other people, and I think you've seen some of them tonight. And it's really refreshing and kind of exciting. I saw the letter that they put out to folks, and this has a picture of the trestle. "Our Capitola trestle vision: Let the people vote." And Mr. Esquemia has his seventy-five words, which he didn't read, I'll read them. "To minimize congestion in Capitola Village, promote safe routes to schools, ensure accessibility for people of all abilities and ages, provide easy beach access, and support sustainable economic development, shall the historic Capitola trestle be used for a safe, continuous trail for pedestrians, cyclists, and other human and electric-assisted transportation within the rail corridor by prohibiting use of city funds or resources to detour the trail onto Capitola streets and sidewalks." That's pretty clear to me. Now, I know you're going to court, August 20th, a judge, Judge Gallagher, great judge, he'll decide whether this thing's legal or not. So you guys are going to vote to put this on the ballot? He'll decide if he says, hey, if he agrees with Mr. Barisone, it's illegal, end of story. But if it stays on the ballot, it means that Mr. Barisone maybe wasn't quite right. And let the people vote. Let them use their First Amendment right to vote. One last thing I want to say, which is kind of interesting, if the RTC is truly the owner of this stuff, they're one lousy steward of that trestle. And they better fix the thing. So, that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Vic.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. No matter how many times I get up here, it's always nerve-wracking to stand before you and speak.
Understood, understood.
I actually am going to come to the table with a little bit of a different commentary. I have a, I live on River View, I look at that trestle. We used to watch the train go across at noon and five every day at clockwork out my daughter's window, she loved looking out of her crib, we have spent many years enjoying that trestle. We photograph it regularly, but my biggest concern in all of this, and what I fail to hear or see being discussed, is the condition of the trestle itself. And it is in such ill repair, it does not take any sort of engineer with any advanced degree to look at that, that structure and consider its safety just sitting there right now. Whether it becomes rail or a trail, my biggest concern is we're talking about a safe passage of pedestrian use from one end of the town to the other. How do we force the hand of the RTC to update and maintain and inspect and ensure that that trestle can withstand any sort of traffic, whether it's foot or otherwise? I feel like we're discussing all of these gray options, you know, whether it's rail, trail, both, whether it's walking, biking, cycling, skating, whether there's a train running across it or not. So if that trestle were to fail and fall down, or crack, or become completely unusable, which in my non-engineering opinion, it probably already is, what would we do then? What would Plan B be? How would, how would this, whether there are foot traffic or not, and it just becomes rail, what is our, what is the plan then? All of that will then be coming through the village as it does now, and we would be stuck now with not being able to force the hand of the RTC to maintain and fix it. So that, that really is more of my opinion this evening that I want to approach to you, is that, you know, whatever goes on the ballot, if it does make it on the ballot or not, that is a huge critical piece of getting from point A to point B, and I have to question its safety and its maintenance, so, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor, council members, my name is John Flanikin. I've been a resident of Capitola now for over twelve years. I'm on the Board of Realtors, and I'm in Rotary with Barisone. So, first of all, I want to say, thanks for doing the impact report, I think that's important information to get out to the public, just the pros and cons of what this ordinance means. I would also like to say that I'm absolutely in favor of this ordinance being on the ballot. I have a four and seven-year-old, and I didn't plan on being part of a bunch of runners, but my wife ran cross-country in college, my kids love running. The idea of being able to go from one side of Capitola to the other side of Capitola, across this bridge, is extremely appealing. And it's not just my wife and my family, I mean, there's a whole community of people, whether they're cyclists or runners, who are looking at this bridge as a real opportunity to get across Capitola in the most efficient way possible, and that would be, of course, across the trestle. I also want to say that the last couple days, I was in San Francisco, and my wife and I rented the jump bikes there. And that is a future that is absolutely coming to Capitola and Santa Cruz County. Being able through power assist to get from point A to point B very quickly on bicycles, it's not even like years away, it's months, maybe a couple years away. So I see this trestle as being a way of getting a lot of people efficiently across, I mean, the county, from Watsonville all the way to the west side of Santa Cruz by bicycle. So I am absolutely in favor of this ordinance going on to the ballot, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, no one else queued up to speak, I'll bring it back to the council now. Ed.
Well, thank everybody for your comments. You know, there's a couple things I heard tonight that resonated with me, seemed to make sense. There was a term used, "We need to believe in democracy." When I've been on this council for six years, we've sat here, we've collectively passed an ordinance on whether we should have cannabis in this city. City of Santa Cruz did that ordinance, City of Watsonville did it. As a city, my role and our role, I think, is to pass ordinances that affect this city. We passed one for plastic bags. It impacted our city, it was a decision our city made about how we wanted to be inside our city with plastic bags, how we wanted to be with cannabis, how we wanted to be with smoking, how we want to be with speed limits, how we want to be with even how many surf schools we have out there. The problem is, is that there's a corridor that's twenty-eight miles long that runs from Watsonville to Santa Cruz. So, what you have to ask yourself is, I was thinking of a good analogy, and Quentin came up from high school, and finally, when he was talking, I got the idea. He's in high school, and he wants the sophomore class to only vote on something that affects the entire school. How would that go over if you said, we're going to vote on who gets to use the recreation period, and only the sophomores get to vote? So I take that and I say, is this about Capitola? Is this about what all the Capitola residents want? Because if the solution is, if we were to just to build a brand-new trestle, and we were to put a pathway on it, does that mean that everybody go away and everybody be happy? Is that what you really want? Do you want a new trestle that goes all the way across with a bike path and a train trestle on it? Would that make everybody happy? No, because that's not what this is about. This is about an initiative, about whether we want a train or a trail, it's a larger issue. But that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about coming here, trying to take away the rights of the city council to administer the city. Our job is to make this a safe place for the people that live here, that means to upgrade the roads, the bike trail, the things that make it safe. Another comment that was made was, "Do something reasonable, practical, or makes the community safe." Well, whatever we have, our roads, our bike trails, we have to try to maintain those until a decision is made. And when I think about that corridor, think about the corridor as a house, you're getting ready to buy a house. That house we paid sixteen million dollars for. That's the trail. And right now, there's an eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar study that's being done, Unified Corridor Study, to determine what's the best use of that trail. That's like when you get a termite report on a house. So the RTC is going to be charged with looking at that report, which comes out at the end of this month, and then making a decision about what's best for the entire corridor. But we're not going to wait for that report. We're going to put it on the ballot and try to make a decision that's not representing the entire county, but the city of Capitola, and you want us to support that? To take away our rights, to not let the county vote on what's the potential needs of this county? And I think that's being a little presumptuous, and it's not democracy. So my vote is for democracy. But tonight, my hands are tied, so my motion is that I make a motion that we place the initiative, place the ordinance on the ballot without alteration.
Second. Under comments?
We're still discussing it. Ed, anything else? You got it? And you got the second?
Yes, Stephanie.
Okay, Kristen.
Yeah. I also want to thank everyone who's taken the time to speak tonight and who have sent emails and other forms of correspondence to the council about how you're feeling about this. I echo what Ed said, in that one of the frustrations that I'm feeling here is that I feel that there is a conflation between the issues of supporting the Greenway, the overall Greenway idea, and supporting this particular ballot initiative, and they are not the same thing. So when people get up and say, you know, I think it's important that we have the trail, I think it's important that we don't have a train, I hear you. And that's not what this does, that's not what this is about. One of the emails, or many of the emails that have been coming in, one of the lines in this kind of seems like a form letter, which I completely understand, is, "The residents deserve a fair opportunity to vote on the future of the trestle." I agree, but again, that's not what this vote does. It doesn't give us an opportunity to decide how this trestle will be used. That being said, a majority of the emails and calls that I get in regard to this particular issue, and the issue larger from Capitola residents, tells me, no, they don't want a train, they want a trail. And so I hear you, and, and I am, I am in support of the general spirit behind what this is trying to do in giving Capitola people, Capitola residents, a louder voice in this process, I really do. That being said, I don't think, I'm frustrated with the conflation between the two issues, that this ballot measure has something to do with whether or not there is support for Greenway in Capitola. The ballot initiative options, as mentioned earlier, are either we adopt it or we put it on the ballot. Tonight, we, we don't have the choice to say, no, don't put it on the ballot. And really, if a judge comes back and says it's legal, speaking only for myself, I can't see a reason why we would try to remove it from the ballot. I don't think that's our responsibility here to say, well, we don't personally like it, so we shouldn't have it on the ballot. That being said, you know, it's, I'm not against initiatives. It was brought up that this is, initiatives have done great things, that citizen initiatives have done great things, I absolutely agree. And again, all I can continue to come back to is that this particular initiative isn't going to change whether or not we have a train, and I think that's very important, because it's hard to have any further discussion about this, as long as we're keeping those two things linked together and they don't belong together. So that's my general feeling about that. But I do want to say that otherwise, overall, I hear the general outpouring of people saying, we want a trail. I hear you, I am not ignoring or devaluing that, but for this particular issue, that this isn't about whether or not we are going to have a train or a trail.
Thank you. Jac.
Ed and Kristen, thanks for your comments. And I echo, I'm glad many people participated, the letters in the inbox are tremendous. We're voting here for what Capitola wants. It is true that the RTC owns the whole rail line, but we can't vote for everyone else in the county, and I don't see anyone else in the county putting a plebiscite on the ballot for the whole county. We're here because we care about this city, and we take this opportunity to take that chance, to get our chance, I'm repeating myself, to vote. It may be true, I respect John Barisone, he's an extremely compless jurist, lawyer, many years of experience dealing with these issues, I respect his opinion, but I also heard Sam came up, and he said, you know, maybe there is a different view on this, lawyers may disagree. And as Kristen said, we're going to have a judge look at that. I'm totally in favor of democracy. And one thing that I'm starting to realize after four years in this office, is democracy isn't clear-cut. We're not all lawyers. We may not know how to write the most effective proposition that skirts around all the legal issues. But what I hear, what Tom said tonight, very clearly, and Juan also, and there was a student that talked too, was a clear desire to address an issue that up until now, they didn't have a chance to address directly. Many decisions were made many years ago that got this whole process going. But what I've been trying to tell people is, things change. I believe that we didn't take into account, and maybe we didn't have the ability or the foresight, what all this would mean when it came to Capitola. We thought in terms of generalities, it would be nice to have a trail, it would be nice to have a train and a trail. We didn't quite figure it all out. So the people that put this ballot initiative, or put this petition together, wanted to have Capitola have a chance to make a statement. So things change. Wouldn't it be nice if the people who are elected and who run the RTC respond to the new needs of the people? So let's get to that. I've been talking consistently since I've been on the RTC about the investment study, Unified Corridor Investment Study. A lot of people say, oh, this is just going to be a wishy-washy study, you could read into it whatever way you want. I want everyone in this room to get involved in the dissection of that study. I want you to talk to your friends and neighbors, that the RTC has a thousand people from Capitola looking at how you react to that study, and your opinions about that study, and how you're going to vote based on that study. That is critical. I'm just going to leave it at that. We have the chance to make a vote. Politics is not always clear, but this is an effort. Politics is not always clear, but this is an effort from the people of Capitola to have their input, and I support it.
Thank you, Jacques. Stephanie.
Thank you very much. I'm a big supporter of public transportation. I grew up in Alameda, went to Berkeley, UC Berkeley, and got, I didn't have a car, and so got around on the bus, go back and forth and go different places. I was there when they were just planning BART, so it was mainly by bus that you got around. And that's still very popular today in the Bay Area, is public transportation. I think the idea of a train here is a little nutty, because I think it's so expensive. But who knows? Who knows? I'm willing to give it a try, and I have told people that I'm waiting until the corridor study comes out before I make a formal, take a formal position on this. I'm sorry that you all think this is just about putting a trail on the rail line, because I think everybody's for that. No, I haven't heard anybody speak against it. That's very popular, and it's a great idea. Also, I'm sorry that you were a little misled and tell us, you know, you want a fair vote, and I wanted to know what "fair" meant. That implies that there might be an unfair vote. I was an English teacher, and so I know how important words mean. So the, as far as putting two measures on the ballot, that would be totally complicated for the public, because the first one, this one, could pass, and the other one might not pass, or it might, but it's too bad that the organizers didn't say, "We don't want a train in Capitola." That would have been very clear. But what's come out of it is this convoluted measure that is, I don't think is legal, and I don't think it's good for Capitola. So I want to just give you a little bit of history on the Sanctuary Scenic Trail. We had been, I was chair of that for about 15 years. It was called the Santa Cruz County Integrated Monterey Bay Sanctuary Task Force. Very long name. It was a huge committee that was made up by, of a whole lot of representatives of people in the county that were interested in promoting the sanctuary. Sanctuary was putting their office down in Monterey, and we wanted to have a presence for them in Santa Cruz. We didn't want all the efforts to be in Monterey County. So we formed this task force to see what we could do to get them to have a presence and to be doing some things in Santa Cruz County to promote the sanctuary. So we got them to have an office here with staff people. Of course, they wanted free rent, and the city of Santa Cruz generously gave them free rent out on the wharf for an office for many years. We decided that our goals were going to be three things: to promote the sanctuary, to help businesses, surf businesses, and related restaurants and hotels and so forth, because we're under, we're not under the Department of Natural Resources, as you might expect. We're under the Department of Commerce. If you know what that means, it's all about money. And so they wanted us to make money on the sanctuary, on the sanctuary. And we said, "What do you want to do? Charge surfers?" And so we decided that, in order to do that, we would develop a brochure, and it was called Fifty Ways to Get Your Feet Wet in the Sanctuary, and I still have copies of it, and I love it. Lovely color brochure that we put in all the hotels, places where they had, store their brochures, and we distributed it also pretty widely. And that listed all the places where you could get your feet wet. You could rent a boat, you could rent a kayak, you could go out on the Chardonnay, you could go out on the wharfs and have dinner and enjoy the sanctuary. We were also, as part of our education, wanted to put up interpretive signs, which we started, and we were working on when the next phase happened. We got them to open, we wanted, we were thinking small in those days, and we thought, "Oh, a kiosk where we can have educational programs and pass out more brochures and educate people about what the sanctuary is, and what it does, and what you can do and what you can't do." There was a lot of confusion of it, about it at that time. So we actually got them to build the beautiful Sanctuary Visitors Center right down at the foot of the wharf in Santa Cruz. That was much more than we ever dreamed, and that was also through the generosity of the city of Santa Cruz, I think donating the land. And they finally committed, they didn't really want to, the federal agency didn't really want to commit a lot of money to these kind of things, but they did. And that is a real gem, a real jewel, where people can go and learn about our sanctuary. We're really lucky to have a sanctuary. There aren't that many of them in the United States. The other thing we talked about over the years was having a trail with interpretive signs, so people could go along the trail, ride along the coast, you could drive, you could walk, you could take your stroller, you could do whatever you wanted to, and stop at the various pullout places and learn about the sanctuary through the interpretive signs. We weren't going to buy anybody's property or take anything. We had the trail mapped out from Davenport to Capitola. In Capitola, we got stuck, because we didn't have a good way to go around. We didn't want people walking, riding, and so forth on McGregor Drive, which didn't have sidewalks. Well, somebody from the rail community came to us and said, "Hey, what about us?" And we said, "Fine, you come and join our group," because we got stuck in Capitola, we might want to use the rail area for a connection back to the coast again. So they were always part of the conversation. It started out, actually, as the California Coastal Trail, which is administered and named and run by the Coastal Conservancy, state agency. They were part of this. We said, "We're not, we're not taking your trail. We want it to be the California Coastal Trail and the Monterey Bay Sanctuary Scenic Trail, and it will be partners, absolutely. We're not trying to step on anybody's toes." So that trail was along the coast, identified from Davenport through Santa Cruz and along Pleasure Point down into Capitola Beach, and we have one of the interpretive signs down in Capitola Beach that was paid for with a grant that we got. We were getting some nice grants for this. So anyway, we were going along just fine, just fine, and we were looking for more grants to do more interpretive signs and more educational outreach efforts to educate people about this wonderful sanctuary that we're, it's so special to have it and so wonderful to have it. "No oil drill lane in the sanctuary." Oil drilling was being proposed off Anunahuevo at the time. And Congressman Panetta was able to get a trailer in every year, no funding for offshore oil drilling. But he couldn't get it over one year. So finally, we said, "We need permanent protection." It was for no...
The cities in the county, this was back in the late '80s, early '90s, all adopted zoning regulations that barred facilities for the transfer of oil from, onto city property.
Right. That was another strategy. We got the cities all along the coast to have an ordinance, and Capitola has one, that says there cannot be a, any facility onshore to transport this oil from the oil rig out there, if they did put one out there, without a vote of the people. And of course, I don't think you would have voted for that kind of an oil transfer facility on the coast, because people didn't want offshore oil drilling. So we, so Sam Farr got involved in. Anyway, the sanctuaries were formed for permanent protection of our coastline against offshore oil drilling. That was the main reason why it was formed, and also for the scientific exploration and for the studies that were being done. We have the largest concentration of marine research areas, I think, in the world on the Monterey coast. We have so many in Pacific Grove and Monterey, Long Marine Lab, et cetera. It's a real hub for marine scientists to do their research. So anyway, we were doing just fine until Congressman Sam Farr said, "Well, I'd like to help. So I'll see if I can get some money for you." And so he got $8 million, $4 million for Monterey County and $4 million for Santa Cruz County. So with our $4 million, we had to put it in some sort of a public agency, because we were just a committee, we didn't really have a bank account. And we ran things through the county, but we couldn't do that. So we got the $4 million, and we put it in AMBAG, Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments, and they banked it for us. And then after a while, they said, "You know, we don't have the staff or time to work on this project. We're going to move the money over to the Regional Transportation Commission." And that was the big mistake. So then, they said, "Well, we're going to develop a plan that'll include the rail line." And we all said, "Uh-huh, they're taking our $4 million, and they're going to spend it on the rail line. They're not going to do a damn thing along the coast." That's exactly what's happened. But in our, so anyway, in our plan, we had, our main plan along the coast was spurs to the rail line. So if people wanted to, you know, use either, they could do that. Well, it's gotten turned around to now, it's the rail line was maybe some spurs to the coast. Well, that's not fair, and it doesn't meet the intention of it. They took our money, our logo, and our name. So if they're going to use our name, the Sanctuary Scenic Trail, we still need spurs to the coast, so people can see here, smell the sanctuary, and learn about the sanctuary, or else they should take our name off of it. So one of the problems with this measure is that if we can't have any detours off there, who's going to go down to the beach and learn about the sanctuary? So we have to have these little spurs and trails, so people can do that if they want to. That was the intention of it. You could get off at various places and go visit the beach, visit the sanctuary, do your, have your day at the beach, too, and enjoy it and learn about it. So, sorry this has gotten so complicated, that you just don't want a train, but I'm sorry you didn't say that in the first place. Those are all my comments. Thank you all for your help.
Well, forgive me for the expression, but thank you for finally bringing the train back into the station. I appreciate that. And I will be sparse. Remember, it's initiative, not a referendum, that's important. And when we say "file suit," we were not mounting an attack against this as a city. We'd like to know whether what we're bringing to the voters has any legal grounds, and trying to see whether it's legal now rather than later seemed like a good idea. It was not an effort to derail this. I keep on doing that, don't I? I'm sorry. Just let me get back to the nuts and bolts of this. Would you speak to me about the parentheses? Because it was, I didn't even notice them as I was reading this. Did we insert those, or is that from the people who are bringing this forward?
No, Tony Candati wrote the ballot question. And he was quoting language from the initiative itself.
So the quotation marks are in the initiative itself?
No, they're not. Those are words that he pulled from the initiative, but he wanted to make sure that they were the ballot question, he wanted to emphasize to the voter that the ballot question was using the terminology of, but we can take those out if that's the council...
Okay, because it could be, as we could see, not taking questions from the floor, but thank you very much. I could see, you know, there was a good point made for the fact that it makes it, it gives the impression, I know what Tony's intention was, but it gives the impression that we are paraphrasing and perhaps singling those words out. So that would be a friendly amendment that I'm going to bring forward, but I'm also going to wait and ask the city clerk, there seem to be a number of things tied to just putting this on the ballot, and one of the most important things for me is including the text of the measure. I didn't know that that was even optional. I thought the text of the measure automatically goes into the voter information, does it not?
No, it doesn't. And the reason is because sometimes you have tremendously lengthy ordinances, for example, taxation ordinances that have to...
The cannabis ordinance, we opted not to because of the length, it's 30 pages.
Yeah, because you have to include all this language. It's mandated by state law, and a lot of it's legal jargon, so it's actually less confusing to accurately paraphrase for the voters. In most instances, including this one, the ordinance is not unduly lengthy, and we think it's in the best public interest just to publish the text of the ordinance in the ballot.
And to include the entire text of the ordinance? And would that not belay any concerns by the attorney for Greenway with regard to how this is worded? I mean, that letter was a bit confusing to me, forgive me, the letter we received from Greenway's attorney, on what the objection was. It seems like we're going forward chapter and verse with the way we're supposed to.
I'm prepared to address that if the council wants me to. I received that letter, I received that letter today as well. He, the attorney, his name is...
Finley.
Lowell Finley, Mr. Finley. He, first of all, cites the trestle detour provision in the findings, and I looked at that, and it, what it says is, "The Regional Transportation Commission has proposed making the trestle off-limits to pedestrians, bikes, electric bikes and skateboarders, deterring pedestrian and bike traffic from the corridor, onto bike lanes and sidewalks in the local Capitola street network and across the Stockton Avenue Bridge." So he's talking about the existing bike lanes and sidewalks in the local Capitola street network and across the Stockton Avenue Bridge. So that's right in the ordinance itself. If you go to the plan, under the master trail plan, under Section 4.11.2, it says, "There are current discussions about improvements to this bridge-trestle due to structural conditions. Coastal trail access through this area will need to continue on existing surfaces and streets and sidewalks across the Soquel Creek and navigate through Capitola Village. Future plans for the trestle replacement should include a new bike pedestrian facility and a bridge." So the initiative and the master trail plan are talking about the same existing streets and sidewalks in the Capitola Village. Mr. Evans was correct in acknowledging that the trail itself, as designed in the master plan and approved, goes through the village itself. Okay?
Well, John, let me try and, you know, zero in on where my question's coming from, and that is, what is the attorney's objection, and what in what we're doing tonight is he objecting to?
I, it was not clear to me, because he says, "The summary inaccurately implies that the measure would prevent expenditures for trail connections." And trail connections, he's, again, using the term "trail" with corridor, and as Mr. Evans acknowledged, the trail, the trestle, at least that portion of the corridor is not part of the trail. But the ordinance, it says, says, "Any funds, the no city of Capitola Department shall spend any funds or resources related to the construction, reconstruction, operation, maintenance, financing, marketing, or signage for a detail, detour of the trail onto Capitola streets or sidewalks." You can't have a detour of the trail onto Capitola streets and sidewalks without having a connection from the trail to those Capitola streets and sidewalks. And then he says that the ordinance's inaccuracy implies that the measure would prevent expenditures for trail connections. So it is unclear to me what he is saying in this letter, and I don't think the question is inaccurate.
Okay, then I'm glad we weren't, I wasn't the only one who was confused.
If I may weigh in?
Yes, please.
He was, he particularly pointed out the word "routing" instead of "detour," and it may be a friendly amendment to change the word. That was the one that was italicized in his letter.
And if you read the report, the term "routing" was chosen because, as Mr. Evans acknowledged, the Capitola Village streets and sidewalks do not constitute a detour from the trail. They are the trail. And that was a conscious decision to use that term instead of "detour." We thought detour would be...
Understood. I think this is angels on the head of a pin, so, in this moment, correct me if I'm wrong, but the motion on the floor, should the friendly amendment go forward to strike the parentheses that we inserted, and to print the attached measure in its entirety, does not fly in the face of those in favor of putting this on the ballot and who circulated it, and their desires and their attorney. Would that be a correct assumption?
Correct.
Good. Is that a friendly amendment, okay?
Question of the city attorney.
Go ahead.
City attorney, have any problem with removing the italics in the provision that the mayor suggested?
No.
And that's a friendly amendment?
Great. And we're all in favor of including the full text?
Yes, absolutely.
And so we'd be taking the quotes out of this?
Correct.
The quotes removed, the text included.
And this is exactly the way it was presented by those who circulated it? This is the core... This is 75 words here. Does their attorney have a problem with these 75 words?
Yes. It's not the question that they proposed. Our office was responsible for preparing the question, and we did.
So they have an issue with the way this is presented as a question to the voters?
Yeah, the question that they proposed, that they wanted, was the one that Mr. Marani read into the record.
Are you more confused?
No, I understand more now. My apologies. Okay. I am going to just say that this could have been drafted more carefully. And I think that goes for every referendum or initiative that's ever been placed on a California ballot. It's usually the day after the election that we question it. So it could have been done better. It is clear to me, this is less about an ordinance within Capitola than a statement by the citizens of Capitola and their feelings about a trail. It may not say it in here, no one, you know, I think we all agree that we want the citizens to weigh in, this is the way they're weighing in. I have no doubt that this is going to be resoundingly passed by the citizens of Capitola, because I speak to a lot of them. So I think that I'm just going to go forward and call the vote, unless you'd like to make another point.
Well, I just want to clarify, is, could you ask me for a friendly amendment to remove the italics and to add some language? Are you still asking for that? Or you find that that's not...
I like that.
No, no. We're removing the.
Quotation marks.
Quotation marks.
I said it.
Right. And I'm just having the entire text on the, in the ballot pamphlet. Those are the only two things. I'm not going to try and wordsmith this according to the way my friend Vic read into the record. It just seems ill-conceived.
Right. We're just removing the italics and adding the additional language.
Correct. What additional language are we adding?
The additional language, there was the full, is there any additional language?
We are checking the box for the full text.
The full text of, is going into the ballot.
Correct, and removing the italics.
Quotation.
Quotation.
Quotation. And I second and agrees with it.
Okay, can I have a roll call vote, please?
I actually have, Stephanie Harland is the second. Do you?
Sure, she'll relinquish the honor. No problem.
Sorry. Are you, are you okay with those amendments?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Councilmember Harland.
Aye.
Councilmember Betrand.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Councilmember Botorf.
Aye.
And Mayor Termini.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll take a five-minute break. You don't have to go home, but you can stay here. Hey, Dan.
Hello.
That's a great presentation. I couldn't do it to her because she was in here now. She's taking care of her.
Well, they're lined up. Look at that.
That's what I said. We are ready.
Nobody else does that.
No.
Here we go.
Love it.
There's my favorite people. We have special color cards for all of you. Mr. City Manager, you ready? Let's move on to 9B, determin amounts for community grants. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. We're here to talk about the 2018 through 2020 Community Grant Program. A little history, in 2014, this city moved from a one-year grant program to a two-year grant program. We've just finished up a two-year grant program, so we're looking at funding for 2018, 19, and 2019, 20. In 2016, the council separated the budget of the program from the allocation of the funds. And right now, the council budgeted $275,000 for the program in 2018 and 2019, as well as 2019, 2020. On May 30th, the council appointed council members Botorf and Peterson to review the grant requests and give recommendations for the full council. Staff also sent out applications to all current grant recipients per the council's direction. This year, the city received 30, received grant requests from 30 community groups funding 40 different programs. Two previous grant-toe recipients did not reapply. The total grants requested this year for both years was $270,947. The subcommittee met and made some recommendations. They reviewed the applications as well as the grant requests. The primary recommendation the subcommittee made was to use the 2017, 2018 award amounts as a base for 2018, 19 awards, with following two exceptions. Senior Citizens Legal Services, the base for 2018, 19 would be the previous grant cycle because in 2017, 2018, there was a reduction in grant allocations for that. So the 2015, 16 was actually higher. So that's going to be, that was the recommended base for that group. And the other one is Community Bridges Lift Line Program. The requested amount was reduced from $47,000 to $30,000. Second was that there'd be a 2% adjustment in, above the base of 2017, 18 for 2018, 19, as well as an additional 2% adjustment for 2019, 2020. The total recommended award amount for 2018, 19 is $240,914. And 2019, 2020 with that additional 2% is $245,000, is $245,732. Additional subcommittee recommendations was that they suggested creating a local critical need fund in 2018, 19 with some of the remaining community grant budget. This fund, as discussed during the subcommittee, would be available for use for local critical needs as designated by the city. That is actually the end of my presentation. Is there any questions?
Why some of and not the balance of? Because we have already approved 275 for this. Why would we not take the remainder above and beyond the 240 and put it in that critical needs fund?
That was a subcommittee recommendation.
Well, then where's the rest of the money going? No, we approved, we approved 275,000 as a council.
You'd like to ask?
Tell me about it.
Sure. So the subcommittee got together with the parameters of $275,000 for each year. And we, when we took, there was a lot of redistribution that was going, where some agencies had not applied for funds, and it left, and then there were some that was a lower request than was originally initiated. So what we had was a, without doing a deep dive into analysis of how to reallocate the extra funds, we said, "Let's, let's go ahead and give a, to all the agencies, equally distributed across the board, let's try to set up an emergency fund." Because we really didn't have any kind of a measure to pump money in, and if something came up mid-year or something, if there was some tragedy that we wanted to address. And then the balance of funds is that we had a discussion that because there were going to be possibly two or three new council people next year that would come in, that we would set the money aside because there were programs that were not fully funded in education and/or seniors. And we said that this would, when mid-year review came up, we would still have the money in the budget year to redistribute at that time with maybe some of the influence of three possible, two, three new possible council members.
So it still remains available to community grants?
It is in there with the intent to spend, okay? The $10,000 was set aside for the emergency fund to get it started.
Got it.
The remaining funds was to be used after the election at mid-year review because there were a lot of programs on the youth side and senior side that had not asked for the amount of funds. And rather than to just distribute it randomly, we said, "If somebody comes in and there's a keen interest or something develops, we would have that money to spend in the budget year."
One more question. Because this is a two-year effort?
Yes.
I will assume that that fund will be carried over to the next year?
I believe that was the intent.
There was never an intent to reduce the $275,000 each year.
So that, at the end of next year, it will be more like $50,000 in that critical need fund if we don't use it or allocate it?
Well, the critical need fund is only $10,000.
Oh, well.
The remaining amount would carry over, trying to get direction on how to do it carried into funds, but it was my intention that probably it would be spent in this year. If not, that residual amount would be carried over with the, with the understanding that we still allocate 275 each year.
Good. I just didn't want to see it evaporate.
It did not, it did not evaporate.
Okay. Stephanie?
I think we should, I think we should allocate it right now. I think they could all identify critical needs that they have right now and more things that they can do with the money. And we budgeted that amount, and I think we should spend that amount this year.
Okay, we're going to wait till we have our discussion, because I think someone wants to speak. Not sure.
Can I make a clarification really quickly?
Go right ahead.
I just want to clarify that the critical needs aren't necessarily critical needs of the community agencies that we're funding, it's the critical needs of us as a council. So for example, if there's a flood in the village, we don't necessarily know which nonprofit would be most able to assist us if we needed hotel vouchers, if we needed work crews, if we need anything like that. So having this critical need fund says that if we have a massive issue, for example, a flood in the village, that we as a council can pull from that fund to say, "We need people to do this work, we can fund you now to do it."
That's why we have the emergency reserve fund.
It's not just the nonprofits.
Yeah. No, that's why we have the emergency reserve. We have over $1 million in the emergency reserve fund.
Different, it was a different intent.
Okay, very good. Raymond, come on up. I'm always glad to see you. And before we start the clock on you, let me tell you, I appreciate you were one of the largest reductions and were able to help us with the lift line reduction in creating the funds and having the excess, so thank you very much. Yeah. Ditto on that.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Raymond Cancino, I'm the CEO of Community Bridges. Thank you for your time, I really appreciate it. Thank you for your continued work to invest in social services tonight. It's not just about the, you know, $275,000 that you provide, it's for the thousands of people that are impacted and benefiting in our communities. And so thank you so much from, on behalf of them. This provides meals to seniors, it provides transportation, and I have some coworkers with me tonight that will explain a little bit more. I also want to commend you all for putting this proposal together. You're carrying the torch. We first started this conversation also with Scotts Valley, and they were, for the first time in 10 years, raising their base minimum. So thank you so much for continuing that. We're going to continue this conversation across the county because I think it's critically important. So one thing I do want to mention is, 2% is great because it's going to help us get 50% towards inflation. The last year, I just want to point out that we had a 4% inflation rate, and so I just want you to consider that. It's $5,500 for all of social services in order to address inflation just for one year. But we really appreciate the continued support and the continued investment to all social services, not just community bridges. So I do want to just provide that information because it just came out in June, in case you haven't seen it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Welcome.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for having us. My name is Ivan Garcia, I'm from Live Oak Community Resources. I wanted to thank you all for, for your continuous support of our Family Resource Center. Live Oak Community Resources is a family resource center of Community Bridges. And I just wanted to share, you know, that with your continued support, we continue to provide, you know, youth programs such as our free tutoring, one-on-one tutoring for our youth that a lot of, you know, citizens from, and youth from Capitola and Live Oak utilize greatly in partnership with the county sheriffs. We, you know, providing free sports, access to sports during the summertime, you know, and we're very excited to have a clinical supervisor on site to be able to provide mental health services to any citizens throughout the county. But thank you for your support and, and the 2% increase, we really, really greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Greetings.
Greetings, Mr. Mayor and council members. I want to, my name's Kirk Ants, I'm the Lift Line Program Director of Program of Community Bridges. And of course, you know, we provide specialized paratransit transportation to mainly low-income elderly and/or disabled individuals. And I've worked for the company for 21 years, and Capitola's always been one of our big supporters and stakeholders and partners, and I want to thank you for that. And we had the opportunity, as we received some funds to Measure D, to give back to Capitola, so there was an opportunity. So our ask was about $18,000 less than last year, a little over 37% reduction, and we just want the opportunity to thank and give back for that. But also as stakeholders and partners, I really want to talk about our clients and what they have to say about the services that you have partnership in. And we did a survey, and fiscal year ending this year, 97% of Lift Line clients feel less isolated due to the services that are provided by Lift Line. That's a tremendous amount, that's almost 100%. And of course, isolation also leads to loneliness. And as I was driving home from work, I heard on the radio the surgeon general speaking, and he was saying loneliness leads to increased heart diseases and dementia and earlier death. So, you know, we're contributing to good health through these services. Also, 83% believes that the services help their family because they're more independent. So now their family members aren't, they're not as dependent on family members, so they can go off to jobs and do other stuff. And lastly, 70% agree that they have increased physical health due to transportation services that Lift Line provide. Even though that's a smaller number, that's huge because as we're also partners with Elder Day, a lot of times, people don't see really improved health as it is more of maintaining health and maintaining better lifestyle. So really thank you, your partners in that, all council members here and previous council members, all contributing to this. This is what our clients have said on the survey, and just want to appreciate you for all that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. It's an honor to be here tonight. My name is Stephen Matsey, I am the new 60-plus senior program coordinator for the Diversity Center of Santa Cruz County. Our program addresses the needs and challenges of the LGBTQ older adult population that can be, especially at risk and vulnerable. So I'm here to talk about the program as well as to thank you for your support in our program. First, I want to share a few key pieces of information with you. Most LGBTQ older adults have suffered a lifetime of marginalization, discrimination, and oppression, which often leads to their apprehension of accessing mainstream services. They are more likely to age alone, they are often estranged from their biological families, they are two times more likely to be single, and three times more likely to have no children. This diminished support can lead to an increase in social isolation, which has been well-documented to affect their physical and emotional well-being. Our program actually started right here in Capitola at Brookvale Terrace Mobile Home Park on Plum Street 15 years ago, when a handful of seniors recognized the need for them to build and maintain social connections as they age. They held monthly potluck luncheons and built and maintained sustainable friendships. Although our program has since outgrown the community center at Brookvale Terrace, Capitola will always be in our hearts. Here is how your support, past, present, and future, has helped us to address the needs of the LGBTQ older adults. We have served 743 duplicated LGBTQ elders through a variety of activities, including five bimonthly luncheons and 12 men's and women's gender-specific social events. We've also implemented a new evidence-based curriculum called Wellness Initiative for Senior Education, one of which has happened here in Capitola. This program has given those seniors an opportunity to not only take control of their health as they age, but also empower them and to build maintainable social connections. It also celebrated their diversity and their resiliency. We realize that more work still needs to be done as our LGBTQ older adult population continues to age, and we appreciate your support in that mission. We need to target more outreach to bring more LGBTQ older adults to our program, including those here in the city of Capitola. We also hope to one day add a direct service component and possibly LGBTQ senior-specific support groups. In closing, I just want to say how grateful we are to the support that the city of Capitola has shown our program over the years, and appreciate the opportunity to be here before you tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hello, Helen.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Helen Uen Storey, I'm the Assistant Director for the Community Action Board of Santa Cruz County. And we had the opportunity recently to come before your council, so we gave you a little bit of information. But I'm really here tonight to thank you for your longstanding support of our rental assistance program, which is one of six of our anti-poverty programs county-wide. As you know, our rental assistance program serves low-income households, seniors, disabled folks, low-income families, keeps them housed, avoiding eviction and homelessness and all the financial and social trauma that's involved with that. So we really want to thank you for that longstanding partnership, as well as your recommendation for continued funding in the next two years. You know, another part of the proposal that I really want to appreciate, and others have spoken to it, is your thoughtfulness in terms of recommending 2% cost adjustment each year of the two-year contract. It's really important, obviously, for all of us nonprofits to deal with the increased cost of business. So thank you for that thoughtfulness. You know, I had with me a little earlier a staff member, Irene Martin, who's our Northman County Case Manager for our rental assistance program, as well as an assisted family, and unfortunately, they weren't able to stay. But I just want to talk a little bit about the impact of your support and what that assisted household let us know. You know, they have a senior in their household, and they had a problem with the social security that's been, was delayed, and they got behind in their rent. And our support with your real financial support kept them housed. We were able to assist them for two months to help avoid eviction and homelessness. And that's one of many stories that, you know, we shared with you previously in terms of families that we helped, disabled folks in the community that we've helped, you know, folks that we're seeing really struggling with medical issues, with family separation and other issues that really, you know, really degrade the ability of a household to stay housed. So I want to thank you again for your thoughtfulness, and just continue to invite partnership, certainly with, you know, the innovation, the local innovation fund. We welcome any partnership and consultation about any priorities. We know what a critical issue poverty is in this community, in this county, where we're the second, you know, highest poverty rate in the state behind LA, which is quite a distinction. So we know it's a, it's an issue that's So, we know it's an issue that's impacting so many, and so, we look forward to continuing to partner with you around this issue. Thanks.
Thank you. Greetings.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Arts Council, Santa Cruz County. My name is Jim Brown and I'm the new Deputy Director of the Arts Council. We're grateful for the 39 years of continuous support provided by the Capitola City Council and the creative partnership that we've enjoyed together. This year, we inspired 574 Capitola schoolchildren through our Spectre Arts Program in the schools. Student artwork from Roy Segura's class at New Brighton Middle School was featured at the Youth Art Exhibit at the county center. And a handful of classroom teachers participated in our Summer Arts Institute, which prepares students to, I'm sorry, prepares teachers to incorporate arts into their academic lessons. We also provided numerous grants to organizations that serve Capitola residents like Shakespeare Santa Cruz, Santa Cruz Shakespeare, excuse me, Tandy Beal, Santa Cruz Poetry Project, the Santa Cruz Symphony, as well as supporting grants to individuals in Capitola and specifically a project called the, I'm sorry, the Capitola Plan Air Painting Event. This October, eight Capitola artists will participate in open studios and two Capitola businesses, Palace Art Supply and Many Hands Gallery, will be some of our most important partners in distributing our Open Studios Guides. We also know that thousands of Capitola residents really enjoy the Open Studios Program. In 2012, our funding from the city of Capitola was reduced from $4,200 to $930. And that funding level has stayed relatively constant, it's grown slightly, as you, as people have noted, your increases over the years. But, we currently have the lowest level of funding recommended for any of the nonprofit organizations in your grants portfolio. This year, we asked that the Arts Council funding be restored to $5,000 to reflect the amount of programming and community impact that we have in Capitola. And we appreciate your consideration of this increase.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Good evening, city council, mayor. My name is Lisa Berkwitz. I'm the Program Director for Meals on Wheels, Program of Community Bridges. And I was thinking tonight how lucky seniors and older adults are who reside in Capitola, not only because it is a really beautiful city in our county, but also because city councils, both past and present, have always found it in their hearts and understood that it was very important to support senior services, in particular, senior meals has been a very, you know, it's been a very welcome, we've been a welcome recipient of the, all the support. And this year, that has allowed us to serve over 8,000 meals to city of Santa Cruz, I'm sorry, city of Capitola residents, and they are most appreciative of all the help. I would like to invite any of you to come anytime and help us deliver meals. We have several times during the year where we specifically invite you, but you're always welcome to go out on a route or to come over to the Live Oak Senior Center and help serve, which there are many seniors from Capitola who participate over there as well. So, thank you again. We are very much appreciative and on behalf of all the seniors we serve in Capitola, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Brenda Moss, Executive Director of Senior Network Services. And first, thank you so much for your support in the past and in the future. As you probably know, Senior Network Services is basically the link to many of the great programs we have for seniors in our entire county. And we start with being the information assistance program. So, seniors, friends, family members, neighbors can call our agency and get information about what services may assist that senior. And through that program, we have various links within our own agency to six other programs. We have a Senior Shared Housing Program, Case Management Services, Money Management Services, the Family Caregiver Support Program, a Home Help and Respite Registry, and the Health Insurance Counseling and Advocacy Program. And there are so many people turning 65 all over the nation, but particularly here in Santa Cruz County. We provide workshops on new-to-Medicare and health insurance. It's a whole different story when you go from employer group insurance to Medicare. And we're doing workshops throughout the county. And we have sites here in Capitola. People come in for one-on-one counseling to understand their benefits. And we do a lot of home visits for people who are not able to come into our agency. And we really appreciate all the support that you have always provided to all the senior programs, but especially to Senior Network Services. So, thank you for the cost of living increase.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Leila Bratovich, and I'm here representing the Conflict Resolution Center of Santa Cruz County. I would like to thank you on behalf of our organization for your continued support for our programs, providing mediation and conflict resolution services to the residents of Capitola and Santa Cruz County. We've served over 300 people from Capitola specifically over the past year. All of the mediations that we've conducted, about 85% of them resulted in a mediated agreement and people resolving their issues through use of dialogue and help in facilitating, reaching those agreements. And based on our surveys, they said about 95% of the participants would recommend our services and would use us again. So, I feel like we have a pretty good track record over the years, over the many years, 30 years that CRC has been around and providing these services. In addition to facilitating dialogue, whether through a neighbor dispute, landlord dispute, disputes over like vacation rentals, ordinance, and as well as youth services through restorative justice programs, we have really been able to offer that to the residents because of the support of your city, of the city of Capitola. We also offer training opportunities where many people come and gain their own skills in how, in better communication skills and how to communicate better, how to better resolve problems without resorting to violence, without resorting to offensive means of resolving conflict and use of mediation skills. I think I send this in the report, but I would like to, you know, invite any of you or your staff that would like to attend one of our trainings. You are welcome as our supporters anyway. Just come and join us. We have one full-day workshop coming up on September 11th. So, just let me know if anybody would like to join that. I would also like to say that, you know, conflict is just, conflict is inevitable. It happens all the time. It happens many times a day to most of us. And it's not good or bad, conflict in itself. And it's only in the way that we deal with conflict, whether it becomes good or becomes bad. So, if we're able to deal with conflict in a positive way, it can be an opportunity for growing relationship and for making ends of a bad situation, making something good. Overall, that results in having nicer communities where, that are safer and that are better community wellness. That's what I wanted to say.
Thank you very much.
So, thank you very much.
Hello?
Hello. I'm Jan Surechild, Program Coordinator of Project Scout. We've been doing your taxes for 40-whatever years. I've only been in charge of the program for 17.
Only?
And, you know, in terms of money, I was, I was thinking if we had not had your earlier conversation, my brain might have been working well enough to say, "Well, you know, if you've got this extra money, you could do another half percent," or maybe it's 3.3. I have no idea because it's 9:30 at night. And I'm one of the people that's just aged into Medicare. I do want to say that we, our goal this last year was to do, to help 90 Capitola residents with their taxes. We actually helped 108. And part of that is because there have been two programs doing free taxes in the county, and the other one folded because it just, they couldn't survive with the funding that they had. And I was exhausted at the end of the year. It's a really hard thing to keep the program going. So, one of the things I want to say is we can do more taxes if we have more volunteers. So, one of the things you can do to help is to get people to volunteer. You don't have, not everybody does the taxes. Some people help people fill out the forms, make sure the forms are in order, those kinds of things. But, that kind of help is really helpful. Total refunds generated for Capitola residents were almost $63,000. That's money that, all of it comes back to the community. It's not going to any, I'm not allowed to mention any companies, but it doesn't go to the headquarters. We also were able to generate earned income credits for low-income families. The other thing we do, the statistics I don't have because we don't have money to have big statistical computer programs, is the number of seniors that we were able to say, "You don't need to do taxes anymore." And some of them have said, "Well, I've had the same income for years. I've been going to a paid preparer. They never said I didn't need to do the taxes, and I was paying them $100, $200, $300, $400." So, that's more money that's staying in your community. So, thank you very much for keeping Scout going and keep it up.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Karen Delaney with the Volunteer Center. I'll start off with awesome news, a little bit of a brag. We have over 20 programs and over 11,000 volunteers countywide that help us transform lives for good. Because of the awesome work of our team, this year, we were named by the Governor's Office as California's 2018 Nonprofit of the Year. So, yay for our. It just is fun to say that, but also sometimes my job is so awesome because we get to make communities better. I do, sometimes part of our job is pushing back and asking to reframe. We are grateful for your support this year as many years. I want to go back to what Helen said. I'm sure you all saw that very troubling article about with the new method, more accurate method of calculating poverty, we are now the second highest po, well, it's not, it wasn't news to me, but what I want us to really understand is 24% of our local people using an accurate measure that counts cost, what it costs to rent and to pay for childcare and to pay for food. By that measure, 24% of the residents of our county are living a poverty lifestyle. And if you read, are in poverty, if you read that report, they say the distinguishing thing about Santa Cruz is that the majority of the people in poverty are working sometimes more than one job. And because our cost is so high, most of the working poor and a lot of the seniors that are in poverty, the ones we come and talk to you about and beg for all the time, their income is too high to qualify for a lot of the services that if they lived in a normal-cost community would actually lift them out of poverty. They don't even get to apply. So, without grants like yours and our other local funders, these people have nothing. And why I'm bringing this up is we need to have a different conversation. We agree with each other. We are equally committed. We are partners in the trenches, but we need to look at this spending differently. So, my pushback is this, we're one of the many programs that requested, we are seeing a huge increase in our family programs. We have waiting lists in every program despite being the best nonprofit in the country. It's not because, in the state, it's not because we're not doing a great job. It's not because you're not generous. It's because the needs here have grown dramatically in a new way, and this community is not recognizing it or responding to it. And so, as you said earlier, Councilmember Bertrand, wouldn't it be great if people stepped back and said, "Hey, maybe the needs are different. Let's take that into consideration." So, when you have requests, when you have money on the table and requests from long-term partners who are telling you, "We need more money because there are greater needs," the choice to ignore that and set aside money not to fund the chosen, proven partners, but to wait for an unnamed crisis later, when we have people every day in our office in crisis, which is why we ask for more funding, I just really want us to think about that. And is that really the best use of the data that's available to us? So, thank you.
Thank you. You get the Spirit Award tonight. Thank you very much. And do me a favor, try and cheer up. Okay.
How much could you do more?
It's always a mistake to follow Karen.
Oh, that's the truth, Dan. You're a brave man.
She's a hard act to follow. My name is Dan Hayfley, Executive Director of O'Neill CIOSE for about four and a half more months, I think. And I just want to thank you for your ongoing support for our program. We've served 1,100 students in the city of Capitola since we started in the late 90s, and this enables these students to learn the language of science, to learn lifelong stewardship. And particularly today, this is more important than it has been in a long time, not just the environmental stewardship part with all the threats that we're facing with the ocean and climate change, but also the fact that science itself seems to be questioned and there's a methodology there, and that's what we teach through our field trip, through the curriculum we offer, through each classroom that we serve, as well as a community service project that each class does. So, we deeply appreciate the support that you've given us. We support, really appreciate the recommendation tonight, and thank you for the cost of living increase. It makes a big difference for us. So, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you for your many years of service.
Good evening. I'm Kristen Glenn. I'm the Grants Manager from DeNTes Community Dental Care. We provide over 1,600 visits to Capitola residents every year. And so, on behalf of our patients, I wanted to come and express our sincere gratitude for your enduring support. This helps kids focus on school instead of a toothache. Adults have the self-confidence to go to a job interview, and seniors helps them to eat. DeNTes did a local needs assessment, and in Santa Cruz County, less than one-third of those on Medi-Cal can even access a dentist. And this doesn't include people without insurance, so seniors on Medicare. We believe that everyone deserves the dignity of a healthy smile, and in total, DeNTes serves over 11,000 patients in Santa Cruz County. But, I just wanted to come and say, it's only with the support of community leaders like you that we're able to do our work. And so, on behalf of those, our patients, thank you.
Thank you. Hello?
Is everybody awake?
Oh, yeah.
Hey, I just want to say to Karen, Grey Bears was named President, the first President Bush's, one of the thousand points of life. So, does that count? Long time ago.
So, it's volunteer one-upmanship now. Okay, good. All right.
We've been around a lot, we've been partners for a long time, and I just want to, first of all, thank you on behalf, Tim Bratton, Grey Bears, our board chair. Are you still awake, Frank? Frank is our board chair, and he was going to talk about, he lives in Capitola and has helped us a lot. We like to say Grey Bears promotes good nutrition, activity, and social connection as like the three Capitola pillars of healthy aging. Does that sound good? We can put that tagline somewhere. Last year, in the last two-year grant cycle, 290,000 pounds of fresh produce, healthy staples to seniors. Mostly, our flagships are Mid-County Senior Center and Bay Avenue Senior Apartments, but also Shadow Brook is the big one. 135 bags we'll be delivering there both days each week, today, this morning, and tomorrow. Great organic apples in the bags today. We just got some strawberries directly from the field tonight, about 4 o'clock that came in, so they'll be in the bags tomorrow. So, you know, the typical bag, a lot of produce, and we hear it from people all the time. Jeannie, a Capitola resident, said, "I've never eaten so healthy. I'm almost 80, and I'm eating salad several times a week for the first time in my life." Is that great? Love the strawberries too. Thank you. So, in addition to that, I mean, the question is, what doesn't Grey Bears do? We now process- We now process styrofoam, so we keep it out of the land, out of the sea, out of the ocean. We're doing a lot for the environment as well. And we do a lot with volunteers. In the, in that two-year period, 52 Capitola volunteers, 7,000 hours of service for Gray Bears to help us do what we do. We asked for a little more money this year. So, the reason why is we, food costs go up. It's up 16.7% in the last year. We've added that to this year's budget, which is really what the ask was. We appreciate the COLA, we appreciate your years of support, and we just wanted to hope that we could backfill a little bit of that, that difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, City Councilmembers, thank you for having me here this evening. I'm Suzanne Willis. I'm the Development and Marketing Officer for Second Harvest Food Bank. Second Harvest provides support for about 55,000 residents in the county. Here in Capitola, it's about 10% of your county, or your city, rather than the 20% that we're seeing countywide. Overall, we distribute more than 8 million pounds of food annually. Here in Capitola, we're looking at over 10,000 pounds of food a month going out through our distributions. The two largest distributions here in your city are for seniors and for schoolchildren. So, we're really focusing on that sort of generational aspect of food insecurity. But we also are supporting those who are suffering from mental illness and drug addiction as well through our services. With the current threats to our social safety networks, your support is ever more important. The work that we're doing with CalFresh Outreach, the work that we're doing with our nutrition, education, and food distribution programs, and then partnering with agencies like Gray Bears and others here in Capitola, really means that we are able to try and reach the most vulnerable in your city, and we can't do that without your help. So with that, I'd like to thank you for your support. I'd like to thank you for the COLA that you're presenting as well. I think that's great. Your partnership is so important to us. One of the things that I wanted to highlight is that through a pass-through grant that we were able to receive this last year, we were able to support the Bay Avenue Senior Centers in their ability to increase their grocery rescue program. So, they're able to bring in even more food that they're picking up because we got the money for them to increase, I think it was to increase refrigeration as well as to get some cold blankets, so the food, the cold chain isn't broken on that food. Anyway, the, all of this work, all of this partnership is made possible by your support, and we really appreciate that. I would like to invite you to come down to Second Harvest for either a tour or even a team-building day. Who doesn't need to build their teams a little bit more? We can put you to work. So, thank you for your partnership, and thank you for feeding hope in Capitola.
Thank you. I'm going to bring you back to the council. Before I open it up to the council, I'd like to ask Kristin, who is the other member of the committee that worked on this, and I'll preface my question by saying, "I'm inherently lazy." So, when I see requests of 270,000 and a budget of 275, why didn't you just give these organizations what they requested? And in the second year, instead of a 2% COLA, give a 1.5% COLA and still be under 275? What was so hard about that? I don't mean to minimize the work you did.
No, not at all.
I appreciate what you did.
That's a legitimate question.
But, I'm, my, I'm feeling like, we just need to give 270 out. It's like, you know, what's the story?
Sure, sure. So, I'm looking at a very longer-term outlook at this. With a two-year budget cycle for community grant applications, one of the things that I really want to look at in the next two years is how we're doing this, and how we can make it more equitable in the way that we're giving our money, how we can ensure that there's opportunity for more programs to be funded than there is now, because historically, we don't allow new people to come in and apply, correct? It's just the people that have already...
The last few cycles, we haven't, but we haven't.
Right. Okay, sure, the last few cycles, that's, that's all I can really speak to in, in my historical knowledge. But I wanted to look at, coming in the future, how do we find ways to make it so that more programs can get funding? The funding is provided in a more equitable way. And I plan on, in the next two years, having nonprofit stakeholder roundtables. I plan on having community member roundtables to really look at this from a much deeper perspective. Now, in terms of just the numbers, when we looked at this, we were also considering things like the potential TOT tax. And in the future, the fact that some of the funding for our youth programs is going to come from somewhere else, so we're actually going to have even more money.
But even, that's even more of a reason to just go with the 270, I would think. That's just, again...
Want to help me out? I...
I didn't want to let him go, because he just, he just wanted to keep as much money as he could, but that's all right.
No, no, because I don't think it's a matter of just keeping money.
No, he's not really like that. He's not really like that, sincerely.
You're just the point, Mr. Mayor, but if you would let the other people speak, or you could let me speak, we'd love to address it, but I want you to know, we spent three, three sessions trying to work this out. And understand that, that, that when community groups come and ask, there's 15 people that are here tonight. There were 46 total asks. There are some people that asked for more money, there are some people that didn't. If, maybe, I think a lot of people, in my experience of doing this for six years, a lot of people were saying, "Can't you please just give us a cost of living?" Some people came back and they asked it for $5,000. Some people asked for $1,400. Sometimes, we could see that they were asking for 3%. There wasn't a reason for the ask, so Kristin volunteered to say, "You know what? I'm going to take these applications. I'm going to do a deep dive. I'm going to look at all these agencies. I'm going to see what the ask is for, where it's going to go. The money is there. It has been allocated. We're not taking the money. The money is 275." But based on her, and it's kind of like tonight, we didn't have, by, we were suggesting that we can put a ballot measure on tomorrow. That's unfair. And it was a little unfair to tell Kristin, to say, "Kristin, I want you to research 46 agencies and figure out who's entitled to this." So, the agreement we came was, let's take the money, let's take what people have asked for, what they, no, let's take what they were granted in the 2000 and, and last cycle. Let's give everybody a COLA which they've asked for. Let's not exceed the COLA that we gave our own employees.
Understood.
Okay? And we said, "And let's take the residual funds, and let's let her do the deep dive, look at these agencies, find out which ones really could use the money based on some of the needs that have been made, and then reallocate that money at the mid-year review." And that was the intent of the committee. It wasn't so easy to say, just because somebody said we could use 5,000 more, I'm sure if we went to all 46 people and said, "Could everybody use 5,000 more?", they'd say, "Well, if we knew we might have got it, we would have asked for it." So, there wasn't this chance to poll everybody, there wasn't a chance to do the work. And Kristin volunteered to take it on as her own personal project. I said, "If you want to run with this, I will support you, and that's what I'm doing tonight. I'm supporting her intention to make it a project and to allocate the money at mid-year review." Still in this budget year.
Yeah, come, come a year from now, there's still an opportunity to continue to allocate more money. There's maybe an opportunity to allocate more money to programs that otherwise would have never had the opportunity to ask us for it. You know, and, and as far as the, the, well, I'll get to the emergency critical need funds.
And the presumption is, that a lot of assumptions we made on allocating some funds was on the success of the TOT measure. If the TOT measure is not successful, some of these groups, and there's a couple groups, I believe, Larry, that did not apply, that may still apply because they didn't get their act together to apply, and should they figure it out, we don't want to look at it and say, "No, we're not going to do that." And so, because the TOT won't be decided until November, because mid-year review, we said, "This would be a great opportunity to give her time to let it all come together." The intent is still to spend every nickel of 275.
And on that note, Stephanie, I'll start with you.
Well, that's why I asked the council when I was mayor to choose, for everybody to choose four or five groups to get to know them, because then you would, which didn't take me up on. And then you would have gotten to know what their greater needs might be, and what they could have done with maybe a little more money. So, I'm really disappointed and sorry that we didn't do that. I'm quite familiar with many, many of these programs. I do think we should give the Arts Council more money for running the Spectre Program and helping with the other activities and the Plen Air Show. Not, not quite $1,000 is ridiculous. That's really terrible. I mean, that's a wonderful program in our schools to, that, and for the teachers, also a wonderful opportunity for training. So, I would really like to just allocate the money, all of it. And I don't think we need an emergency fund. I don't want to allocate it to other groups that didn't get their act together. That's not fair to these people who got their act together and submitted the application. So, that's not, I don't think that's a good idea at all. So, I would just like to allocate the rest of the money and be done with it. And we've given them a nice COLA. It's not the cost, really the cost of living, but I think it's fair considering our employees too.
Rock, what do you have to say?
You know, I think we're doing, I've been a big supporter of funding nonprofits, for sure. And I could, you know, I'm on the senior council, I could go on and talk about Scouts. Daryl didn't have the time to finish probably all the things he wanted to say. Deantis came up in one of our surveys as one of the highest needs, you know, for dental care. So, we're, I'm well aware of many of the issues that everyone in this audience here, in this chamber, supports. When I first came to Capitola, one of the things, I was lucky enough to join, Sam's in the back, he appointed me on the FAC, one of the first official committees I had, and I still remember that. Excuse me? Oh, sorry, Finance Advisor Committee. Since the beginning of my tenure on the FAC, and I've been on it now for 12 years or whatever, it's been pretty a long run. The allocation for finances, the needs of the 501(c)(3)'s and the services that we get, that we help provide for, has been very contentious. And we've never made any changes. They've been added to as more groups came and requested money, but we've never actually come up with a good evaluation. I remember Mike tried to work that with, I think, Bobby Gunn, right? So, I think what Kristin is doing here is saying, and I said earlier, and I think it was repeated a little bit a while ago, things change. And so, it's kind of hard, I think, for some in the audience here, and many haven't shown up, but to hear that. And so, I think that's what the effort is right now, is to try to look at what we have and what are the needs of this community, Capitola primarily, and we also recognize that it supports the county programs too, just as well. So, I think that's what's going on here. I, for one, and I know others that are involved in our position right here, may want to refocus things, and I don't know if that's going to be the case. Our park and rec, our recreation department is going to go through a big change, and, you know, maybe serving people through expanded services that address the needs of kids. So, I think everyone here in the audience knows, you spend a dollar on a kid, and it's magnified by about seven. And, you know, what better way to serve the community than through kids later on in life? They're going to be very much thankful for that aid as they were, when they were younger and growing. As you know, I'm on the senior council, I just said that, but, you know, at the end of life, I mean, the things that you have to contend with, like loneliness and a whole variety of other issues. So, what is the proper balance? And I think that's one reason why we haven't been able to address it carefully. So, I think what's happening here is that effort. And I respect Kristin. I have to give a shout-out for her program here, is to have these one-on-one meetings such as Stephanie talked about, and try to get a better understanding, a deep dive into what the programs mean and how they're funded, and what they mean to the community in general. And that's going to be a hard thing. I'm very aware of the fact that every single program needs to have continuity in terms of funding. You cannot plan your services on an annual basis if it's uncertain what your funding's going to be. I don't know how this evaluation's going to work out. Whatever way it works out, especially if we get support for the TOT increase, it's going to have to be over a number of years. It's going to have to be very gradual, so the programs can adjust. So, I think this is an effort that's going to be something we all learn from, okay? Capitola is going to learn better what the needs of the community organizations are and how they provide services. And the community, hopefully, is going to support us in providing more money to provide for those services. So, we don't know at this point how this is going to play out, okay? It depends on a lot of things that are up in the air. When a council like this asks the community for money, it's a very serious thing. It's very serious to me. We're asking money for the TOT increase. Ed has worked extensively on that to get the, the commercial entities in this community behind that. Tremendous job. We're going to ask for money to, from the marijuana tax. To me, whenever we ask for money, that implies a bargain with the community. You don't ask for money and just take it. We have to be providing services. And so, that's what we're going through right now. And this is just the start of it. I commend Kristin for making those bold moves to try to put a plan into place. It's not an easy thing to do. It might shake things up. I don't know. I have a feeling, though, when you look at Capitola's commitment to supporting nonprofits and the services that they provide, we've been there at rather high, significantly high amounts compared to other communities here. And I'm going to make sure that stays that way. But right now, we're in evaluation mode. Thank you.
Stephanie?
My other concern is that, waiting till mid-year, we may have new council members that don't know anything about these groups, so they're not going to make educated decisions about it. So, I don't want to wait till then. That's, that's not a good process.
Kristin, I'm heading to you last, I'm giving you the last bite. I, I, I get the last bite. Go ahead, Kristin.
Okay. One of the things I do want to say is, is that I, I did look at every single one of these applications. Every single one of the applications that came to us, I looked through all of them. I read them all. Of the, of those of you that came up and speak today, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, I have, I have direct experience either as a recipient, as a client, as a board member, with seven of you that got up here today. So, the work that the nonprofit community does in our community is incredibly important to me, and which is why I'm putting so much effort into trying to understand it and revamp it, if that's what needs to be done over a two-year period. I don't want there to be any belief that I am ignoring those community partners that have been here for a long time. I want to open the door so that there may be able to have opportunity for new community partners to join us in what we already have, and we've already started here in Capitola. Let's see here, I'm trying to see which notes I wrote down as I was thinking. I did see that, that report about how Santa Cruz County is second highest in poverty as the, as the co-chair of the Board for the Community Action Board, we do look, that's what we do, is we run programs that fight poverty and the causes of poverty in Santa Cruz County. The Arts Council, I was one of those kids when, in first grade, that had their art up in the, in the county building. It was a big deal, there's a ceremony, like, it was fantastic. I was invited to see Odyssey and saw how fantastic experience that is for the kids. Conflict Resolution Center, I'm looking into your September workshops that you're going to be offering. Second Harvest, less than five years ago, I was in line for your food banks. I understand how much work the nonprofit community does, and how much of a difference that it makes. So, I don't want in any way for this to seem like I am trying to cut down the funding, that I'm trying to hold on to money just so that we can keep it. I'm already started peer-reviewed scientific research on equitable grant funding, on, should we use competitive or formula-based funding? Should we ask our applicants to prove that they have equity in their organizations and then wait the applications based on that? These are the kind of questions that I'm asking, and like Ed said, it wasn't something I was going to be able to do in a two- or three- or four-week period, which is, you know, what we had in, in this particular instance. I wanted this to be a much deeper dive to ensure that the nonprofit community has a, a bigger say, the community citizens have a bigger say, and that we can work together towards that. So, again, I, I just, I can't emphasize enough that the nonprofit community is invaluable to our community as a whole. And I wish we could just throw money at all of you all the time. But I'm, I'm just trying to determine how do we do that as a city, in a way that benefits our nonprofit community, it benefits our citizens? Because ultimately, that's what it means for the nonprofits, right? Is we, as a city, have a general plan, and there's going to be holes in that general plan that we can't always fill. We can't provide housing vouchers for people who are displaced. We can't provide food for people who need it. That's what the nonprofit community is, is stepping in and filling those gaps in our plan as a city. So, again, you know, my, my idea here was that we were trying to set aside funds for at least a year, or, or for at least until the mid-year budget process, so that we can see, is there an opportunity for more people to join us at this table? Is there an opportunity to determine, hey, maybe those with the, one of the things I found in my research is that those with the smallest budgets are typically, have the biggest need for the grant funding, but are getting the smallest amount of funding. And that as you get higher up, those who have the really big budgets are getting really big amounts of funding. And so, maybe that's happening here, maybe it's not. I haven't gotten that far into it, but that's something that I want to look into. I want to make sure that this is a fair and equitable process for all of us. Finally, you know, I don't, I don't know. Does our, do our emergency reserves allow for us to... for us to fund hotel rooms for those who are displaced if there's a flood?
There for any emergency that we, that council deems necessary.
But any cause in that emergency, that's what I'm saying. If there's a flood in the village, understandably, we could use that money for repairing a pipe, for pumping out water. Can we use that money for housing displaced citizens? Can we use that money for putting food on their table? Is that the kind of thing that our emergency reserve can do?
I think the answer is technically, it could be. I mean, I think in general, the emergency reserve has been prioritized for infrastructure-type improvements, and those types of things, but I think technically, it could be used for, for those other sorts of uses as well.
Okay. Good to know.
And now...
That's it?
Without further ado...
You know, I want you to understand that we did spend a long time, I want to thank you for appointing the two of us to this subcommittee, and we took this challenge seriously. And for me, I've, the second time serving on a subcommittee. And what I didn't want to do is, if I've watched this over six years, just continue to come and reallocate, come and reallocate. There hasn't been any increase, there has been no potential. And what I didn't want to do is, I didn't want to take the money that was left and reallocate it, because should we find that there's another need, or we want to go in a different direction, the worst thing we do to these agencies is tell them we're going to take money away from them. There was a couple corrections we made on here, where last time around, we made, there was a discussion at the end, and we ran out of money, and we took money from some agency, and I can't remember who it was, and Larry May can help me.
Senior Services Legal.
Senior Legal Services, because, and we were going to fund them out of somebody's private pocket, and that's not the way for any of you to count on your funding. So we started off saying, let's just go with what people receive, let's give them the increase, let's do this, because it was not about giving you something and then, a year later, taking it away. So at this point, I'd like to make a motion that the, that the city council accept the subcommittee recommendation and approve our, our proposal.
I'll second that. Okay, for discussion. Allow me. These asks are not arbitrary. Look at the requests for 1819. Do not assume that if there is extra money, people just kind of, these organizations willy-nilly bump $500 or $1,000 on, they get very specific because they're dealing in dollars sometimes, not even thousands of dollars. There is a flaw in the basic premise, and that is, in a bad year like 2012, 13, we took deep cuts from these people, and the only thing we did to correct it over the years was put 2% or 3% on, and the Arts Council is a perfect example. We cut them deeply, because nobody thinks art's important, or not as critical as food, and the deep cut remained in place for the next six years. Just doesn't make sense. We have enough money to fund everyone's ask. I think that when the TOT measure passes, we will have considerably more that we don't have to reallocate, that we can keep aside, but keeping it aside for an emergency? I have news for you. This is an emergency. Every year is an emergency. I have sat in the offices, I've done the work that Stephanie did, as well as you, and been closely associated with these organizations. Every day is an emergency. It's amazing that people even walk into the office knowing what they're going to confront. They're going to confront great need with very little resources, every single day. And to say we have allocated 275, and in hopes of some kind of looking forward and deep diving and whatever you want to use to describe it, we're going to hold back an extra $40,000. We can give, we can grant every single request and give a 1.5% COLA and still be within the 275 after two years. That's my pitch, that's what I'd like to see. And I, in my heart, it's the only thing I can vote for with conscience. It is, for us, it's doing some planning and being strategic. For the people out there, it's $30,000 or $40,000 that don't get to the people who need it. Stephanie?
You know, many of these agencies have waiting lists or are not serving enough people, as many people as they would like to. And a case in point is Big Brothers and Big Sisters. We only give them $2900, $2800. They have a huge waiting list, and we know from the statistics that having a big brother or a big sister reduces truancy, improves grades, improves success in life, reduces probably psychological issues that they have, and it's a tremendously good program for youth over the long run. We only get, we're only giving them a pittance. If they had more money, they could recruit more volunteers in their program.
How many of those kids are from Capitola, though?
It's in, it's in their application.
Right, and that's what, and that's all I'm arguing, is that rather than giving this money out across the board, is to be able to look at those things in a deeper level and say, yes, this is important work, absolutely, a, a child having a big brother or a big sister, but if we're talking about a waiting list, how many of those kids on the waiting list are Capitola kids? Because that's our obligation.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to not have this argument and call the question.
I'm not going to let the question be called yet.
Even though, even though they may only have five or 10...
Hold on, she's in the middle of her...
I don't think it's good to pit council members against council members, and that's what we're doing here.
But, but actually, that's what a debate is. You know, we are, we're arguing it in a rational way, I understand everyone's feelings, I understand the ownership you have in the work you've done, and it's good. And Jacques, you had one more question?
Well, I hadn't finished my comment, my comment yet.
Okay, finish your comment.
Even if we only had five or 10 Capitola kids on that list, if we could serve them, it would sort of really, really improve their life, and that's worth it for, for, for the five or 10 kids that are on that list. It's worth it for one kid, to help one kid, to do better in school and have a better life.
Jacques, you had a question or a comment? Or are you done commenting?
I had a comment.
But you don't have it anymore?
I do, but...
Well, then make it, and then we'll continue here.
So, this is our problem, where we're trying to figure out how to, how to effectively, from capital standpoint, deal with the allocations. Like I said, ever since I was on the Finance Advisory Committee, it's been the same discussion. And at some point, I think, I completely agree with Stephanie. When I sit and look at the allocations in the senior council, we, we realize that. I think that it should have been done in a slower trajectory, that's, that was my main point, that I just said. But at some point, I think we have to sort of grab this and try to work with them. So I'm going to support this, and in midterm, we could reevaluate and say, okay, well, maybe we've made some mistakes, maybe we should, we should actually fully fund that request, or maybe take on some other agencies that we feel better serve, the people of Capitola or the county of Santa Cruz. We, we have to have that evaluation, and I think that evaluation rather is an important one to do.
I'm going to, I'm going to have a roll call vote. Before I have a roll call vote, to Stephanie's point, there are things on here you can do numbers on, like Meals on Wheels, and we can count meals, and we can count breakfast, lunches, and dinners, and there are some things that you do because they have to be done. Big Brothers and Big Sisters is one of them. There are a few other things on here that strike that, where you can't look at the numbers. One person is important enough. And Jacques, it's easy for us to say, wait six months for midterm? You need to sit in one of these nonprofit offices and tell someone that in six months, we may be able to help you with your rent. It, it makes no sense. Roll call.
Councilmember Harland?
No.
Councilmember Bertrand?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Bator?
Aye.
Mayor Termini?
No.
Passes 3-2.
Okay. Thank you, folks, appreciate your coming. And we're on to ballot measure arguments.
Just a sec.
Are we up?
Yes, as soon as, um, you're, okay. So we have a rather full ballot this year. Arguments have been set to match the county. The process is, there is a filer for an argument, and code sets the process. A filer needs to be either authorized council member or members, an individual Capitola voter, a bona fide association of citizens, or a combination of voters and associations. Paperwork for the fabulous number of people back there, there was paperwork available if anyone was there, still probably is. That filer then determines the signers, there are up to five signers, there are not the limits on the signers that there are in the filer. And they must, all arguments must be accompanied by the paperwork, which has the original signature on it. The county has, I'm sorry, trying to rush through this, it's okay.
I'm sorry, yeah.
I know, it's all right. The argument paperwork is also, and information is available from the county. I'm, I'm doing the speed version here, I'm sorry. I have set my deadlines to match the county, a week from tomorrow, arguments, week after that, rebuttals. Analyses from the attorney are also due on the 17th. I am requiring that originals be in by 5:00. You cannot submit electronic or faxed versions until we are going to get the originals later. I choose the arguments, but I have to follow the code. If it's our, and we have authorized members, where the first priority, the sponsors of the initiative have the first right for arguing in favor of their position, should we not get arguments from that, then I would move down to bona fide association of citizens and individual Capitola voters. If we would happen to get the same category, then I would work with Gail Pellerin and choose from among those. And now this is the time for us to determine, we have these four measures, we have already requested an impartial analysis for the business tax, and the mayor has provided a draft, and we have an updated draft, the PDF is in there for review. His recommendation was perhaps that the entire council would wish to be the signers in this case, and not go outside of the council to have any other support.
Shall we take these one at a time? Yeah.
That was my thought, thanks.
Start with cannabis, since it's up there. Hopefully, this language meets with everyone's approval.
I have one, one correction.
Go right ahead. So, Councilwoman Harland, so this version is slightly different than the version that was in the packet?
Okay, well, I'll tell you what I had to consider about.
Made some corrections.
In the, let's see. In the last paragraph, it starts out, "The tax is an important part of the city's ongoing commitment to fiscal responsibility. It was carefully crafted public forums to find the right balance between generating the revenue needed while addressing certainty for this emerging industry." I don't think anybody's, it's not even grammatically correct, but I don't think anybody's going to understand what that says.
It was, if you notice, it's been corrected to...
I can't, I can't read the board.
It was carefully crafted in public forums to find the right balance between generating revenue while creating certainty for this emerging industry. There's three different colors up there.
I don't think that's going to mean a thing to the, to the voters. I think just eliminate that. We, we want it to be as clear and simple as possible. They're not going to care about...
Can we take the edits out of this and just show it all in black?
Sure. They're, they're not going to care about public forums or the right balance between, between that, I don't think. I think that's kind of extra information that's not needed. We should just make it very clear to people. People don't understand legalese like that, I think.
Is this similar to other language, to the, to other measures?
I used other measures, languages, it was common together.
I don't have a problem with the language.
The average voter, I don't think is going to care.
Well, we had 300 words, I was afraid to leave any out.
No, make it, no, make it simple, simple.
Kristin, Jacques, what do you think about this? The way it reads?
I like it. I think, you know, I think the line about the public forums is kind of important, because, you know, maybe an average, you know, general voter might not care about if it was a public forum, but it's the voter that's going to be scrutinizing, why did we decide to do this, that would want to know that there was public forums involved.
Well, then, let's just say we had public forums. Where it was discussed.
Normally, say we go through that process.
Yeah.
No, but we always want to. Yeah, we always want to.
Or you can say it was discussed at, you know, four councils, four city council meetings, or something like that, so they know it was thoroughly discussed.
Would you repeat what you don't, what, what the issue is?
I don't like the holes, I don't like the whole sentence.
The whole paragraph.
No, the holes, that hole, it's just that, that sentence. I think it's fine, the tax is an important part of the city. I was just an English teacher, and so I'm very, very, want to be very precise in words and say what we mean and keep it simple.
I think it says what we did, that's, to my recollection, that's the discussion we had, that was the open discussion, what we talked about.
That we should say we discussed it at four council meetings.
We were concerned about balancing, that, that was the whole thing. We were talking about generating money and then trying to figure out where this industry's going. I mean, we had the police chief up here discussing about where this is going, I mean, all that stuff in there, we did.
I know, but I don't think the public's going to care about that, about this, that sentence.
Well, it won't hurt.
Well, in Jacques' version of transparency, it's like, we're just putting on air the things we talked about, that's being transparent, this is how we came to this.
Well, let's say that we had four council meetings, where it was discussed.
It was carefully...
Just so you know, Stephanie, I went to public forums because that's what a council meeting is. Calling it just a council meeting gives, gives the impression that the council discussed it and then went forward. A council meeting is a public forum.
Public hearings where we had many speakers.
Right.
You know, to say that, we had four city council meetings with public hearings to discuss this issue.
Do you want to open to the public?
Any of you Naird Wells back there, the Breakfast Club, want to come up here and talk to us, or no? No? Okay, good.
Motion to adopt language.
Second.
Anybody have anything else to say? Then...
We're just doing it a little bit differently than we normally do.
On the language, just, this is just a vote on the language, and I would like to add a hostile, no, a friendly amendment, not a hostile amendment, that we also consider the fact that I've requested all the council members to sign on to this, so we have no one else signing, it's just the full city council. Sound right?
I'm going to ask not to sign this one.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to ask the treasurer to sign it in my place.
I'm happy to do that with the existing verbiage.
Good. You're willing to sign Ed's name? No, I'm only kidding. Okay, understood. So we'll, we'll keep that out of this motion, we'll keep the motion purer for our city clerk, and have a roll call vote just on the language, please.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify then, I think we would say, please join us...
Yes.
...in voting yes on measure?
Correct, correct.
Councilmember Harland?
No.
Councilmember Bertrand?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bator?
Yes.
Mayor Termini?
Yes. And as far as signers, do we have to actually take a, a motion and a vote on the signers?
I think you just did.
No, we didn't include that because Ed didn't want to sign on it.
It was a pure...
It was just a motion, so...
Sure. Motion for the language only, yeah.
And so the motion, so a motion to have the four council members who are willing to sign it...
Make a motion that the four council members, excluding myself and the treasurer, sign the ballot proposal.
The four council members and the treasurer, not yourself. That's the motion. Good. All, all at once? Let's, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Good. Rolling. Okay, let's move on to TOT. I would like to request that Kristin and Ed, because of the stellar work they've done in the subcommittee before, get together and draft and identify signers to submit for the argument in favor of the TOT ballot item. Does that sound something that you would accept?
Absolutely.
Okay, then, done.
Motion to authorize those two as the...
Yes.
Make a motion to authorize myself and Kristin, and up to three others to sign the ballot measure.
Second.
And prepare the argument.
The argument.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That's good. Now, let's see, how about designating two council members to work with the treasurer to draft and identify signers and submit an argument?
May I ask if you, we're not, we don't think there's an impartial analysis is required for that? It's fairly straight, we are publishing the entire ordinance, so we're good, okay.
Now we're down to the treasurer.
Can I just throw a little addition in there, which is that I already have a draft, want to see it, I don't know, I've gave it, I gave it to the staff.
Well, you're involved with this no matter whether you want to or not, you're one of the, you're one of the three. We just need two council members to jump in there with him. Stephanie, can you get involved with the treasurer?
I'd be happy to.
And since, let's see, Stephanie and myself, work with you?
Can you skip me?
I know. I'm trying not to put you on the spot because I don't want you to embarrass yourself. So, is there a motion?
Motion to have Mayor Termini and Councilman Harland and the treasurer on the treasurer's ballot.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And let's see, I think that we've done our job here, Mr. City Manager, or do you want us to do more?
Mr. Mayor, I think on the appointed treasurer, because it's a little bit esoteric, you may want to direct the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis, to explain to voters that treasures are required under California law, and explain some of the sort of nuances, nuts and bolts. Not make an argument, but just explain the situation.
And that would be the city attorney who would be preparing that impartial analysis? Is that the pleasure of the council?
Absolutely.
So moved?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. I believe that handles all of our ballot measures, does it not? Or do you have something else you need from this?
Well, the only other one would be is if you want to identify signers to craft a Greenway argument.
I don't think there's any appetite up here to touch that in any way, shape, or form unless there's somebody has a need to. Jacques, is there a question or a comment in your eyes?
I just said I would expect that the main organization in support of the ballot measure is the Greenway people, and the main organization in opposition to the ballot measure are the Fort people, and you probably would expect them to submit arguments.
That's going to come forward one way or the other. Good.
I'd be happy to be involved if they need a council member.
Well, you can contact that organization and see. Now, we're down to designate a voting delegate, an alternate for the 2018 League of California Cities Annual Conference. Who wants to do this? Don't all rush at once.
I'm going.
You're going? You're going to be our voting delegate?
I nominate Councilwoman Harland for that position.
Second.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
That could be the alternate. We need, we need two alternates.
Up to two, if you not need to. And...
They asked for two alternates.
I nominate Councilwoman Bertrand for the alternate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Have a nice trip.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the only other question we would have is if those two, if Councilmember Bertrand and Councilwoman Harland are planning to attend, is anybody else planning on attending? Because if so, we would have to cancel the September 13th council meeting.
Are we still good? September 13th, the three of us?
Bring it on.
Yeah.
I want to see that agenda.
Nope, sorry.
I'm even, you're an alternate, you won't be there. I'm even going to move from this chair on that meeting.
You're right. You're going to be right there.
You're right here.
That's right. Just be the three of us. Anything else?
All cozy.
We're all good?
Do we want to, are you leaving to the delegates' discretion to make the votes?
I trust them.
Yeah, well, I think we should, I was reading some of the things. I think we should at least bring it up. So I'll bring it up.
You can come back and report.
Yeah. I'll bring it up before the...
Stephanie usually does. That's it. Thank you to the gallery out there. It's great. I hope we were mildly entertaining, and we all learned something about democracy and pitting one council member against another. Not my intention. I love you all. Good night, Capitola.